Unable to make it this evening, um, for various reasons. I do want to say a quick prayer for Cage, I just, uh, and keep his family in, in our prayers. They had a family medical emergency, and I will leave it that way. Um, this evening, we have several things, um, with Mr. Mike, where'd you go? Mike Bates here. Um, Mike Bates began working in the radio in the nineteen eighty at age fourteen while in high school in Virginia. During his career, Mike has covered numerous events at the White House, plus visits to northwest Florida by Presidents Bill Clinton, George W. Bush, Barack Obama, and Donald Trump. In March twenty sixteen, he was part of the official White House prep, or press corps, that accompanied President Obama on his trip to Havana, Cuba. He owned thirteen thirty AM W E B Y for eighteen years until, until he sold it two years ago. He now hosts The Mike Bates Show on W P N N Radio at one oh three point seven FM and seven ninety eight AM. It airs Saturday mornings at seven AM, and then every episode is un- uploaded as a podcast to W W W, The Mike Bates Show dot com. He frequently updates a blog on the same website. Over the years, Mike has conducted countless political debates, and he has interviewed countless people during his career, ranging from presidential candidates to a member of the SEAL Team Six that was on the raid that killed Osama bin Laden. We are fortunate to have him as the moderator of tonight's debate. Please welcome Mike Bates.
Thank you very much. So as Americans, we're frankly fortunate. You know, most of the world doesn't get to do this, not even half the world gets to do this. We get to elect our own leaders. And so we are here tonight to learn more about those leaders we will be electing for Santa Rosa County, who will, three of them, will be sitting on the Board of County Commissioners for the next four years. Some are not in attendance, but for those who are, we will go down, starting right here. And just take a minute, please, introduce yourself, and then I'll get to questions when we're done.
My name is Stacy Bryan. I'm a candidate for District One, County Commissioner.
Jerry Cooley, I'm a candidate for County Commissioner, District Three.
Yeah, if I could, maybe I wasn't clear enough. I didn't mean just what your name is, like a one-minute intro, elevator speech, as we call them. I'm gonna be asking you your questions, but this gives you an opportunity to say whatever you want. Take about a minute, just tell us about yourself.
Um, well, my name is Stacy Bryan. I'm candidate for District One, County Commissioner. I'm originally from the Shamukla area, grew up, uh, most of my life in Santa Rosa County. I've been a ER nurse for about ten years, and then last twenty-something years, I've been a nursing assistant and have my own business that I started about three, four years ago in Santa Rosa County. Um, married my wife Kate, and we have three children. And I'm kinda looking forward to, um, hearing the questions tonight and seeing what's on everyone's mind regarding, uh, the county and, um, what's important to you guys.
Uh, my name's Jerry Cooley. I'm a candidate for County Commissioner, District Three. I consider myself a son of Santa Rosa County. Uh, I've lived here all my life. Uh, this county means a lot to me. Uh, I've kinda been a county watchdog for the last twenty years and, uh, recently retired. And the, the natural thing for me to do is to take a stronger leadership role in Santa Rosa County, so I decided to put my name in the hat and run for County Commissioner. Thank you.
James Hawkins, who would be next, may be showing up in a little while, we're not certain of that, and Gage, as was mentioned earlier, had a family emergency, so.
Hello, everybody, I'm Ryan Atkins. Um, I grew up here. I live out in Jay, in the Berrydell area. My daddy was in the Navy, got stationed in Waddingfield when I was two years old. And I joined the Navy after graduation in eighty-six and been around the world, and this is the best place to be, so I came back home. Uh, my beautiful wife's over, I got four sons, two in the service, I got four grandkids, and I'm just trying to make things better. Um, I've got a lot of, a lot of schooling, a lot of, a lot of things that can help this county, uh, really move ahead and forward, so that's why I'm in this race.
Good evening, my name is Colton Wright. I'm a thirty-year resident of Santa Rosa County since nineteen ninety. Uh, married to, uh, my wife Regina for almost eighteen years now, and have two amazing young daughters that are seven and ten. Um, I've been heavily involved in the community for many years and have a, a business that we've owned for sixteen years in the Gulf Breeze area, and I view the opportunity to be a County Commissioner as an opportunity to give back to my community.
I'm Lane Lynchard, you're current County Commissioner for District Five. We need experienced, successful leadership in Santa Rosa County, and that's what I offer. I have the background, education, and experience to lead San, Santa Rosa forward, making common sense decisions that are in the best interest of the families in our county. I grew up here, I've practiced law in Navarre for the last twenty years. Look at the facts about Santa Rosa County. Our county government expenditures are the lowest in the state per capita. Our median household income grew twenty-two percent over the past decade compared to twelve percent for the state. We have the fourth highest median income in the state. We're fighting to bring high-paying jobs to Santa Rosa County, and we're winning that fight. I've worked to make Santa Rosa County more attractive to those industries and employers that we need to keep our kids here, so that they can have career opportunities at home rather than having to go elsewhere after they graduate from college or get ready to enter the, the career world. I've worked for you on the Restore Act, that's going to boost our economy and protect our environment for decades to come. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve as your County Commissioner for the past twelve years, and I ask for your vote and support on August eighteenth.
Okay, so this question is going to be for each of you, and Lane, we'll start at your end and just work down this way. Give about a minute and a half, two minutes in the most, uh, answer to the question. And it's not gonna be a real simple one, right? The first question's not, "Why are kittens and puppies cute?" We wanted to give you a tough one. So Santa Rosa County voters, in October of twenty nineteen, rejected increasing the local option sales tax to a full one penny. In November, voters will be asked to continue the tax at the existing half-penny rate. That would roughly generate about eight million dollars per year for transportation and drainage improvements, for parks and recreation, and for other capital expenditures, such as new police cars. Why do you believe voters rejected the increase previously? And should they deny its renewal, what is your plan to deal with that budget shortfall? Lane, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, everyone, for tuning in and taking an interest in your local government. I think the effort to implement the one-cent L O S T was rushed, I think the timing was bad. Uh, looking back, I think we should've waited until we had more of a track record with the half-cent local option sales tax. Again, it comes down to dollars and cents for the county, and our county government spends, per capita, seven hundred and thirty dollars per resident in the state. That is by far the lowest in the state. The state average is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. So, we don't have a lot of excess funds, and as a result, over the years, our infrastructure has, we've not been able to keep up with, uh, our, our infrastructure, uh, due to the growth in the county. The L O S T gave us an opportunity to catch up on deferred maintenance, to invest capital, uh, in our roads and dr- bridges department, invest capital in law enforcement, uh, our fire departments throughout the county. Uh, it was a, an opportunity, again, to, to catch up on those, that, those deferred maintenance items. If it is not passed, then, uh, I've been there before. In two thousand eight, when we entered the Great Recession, the county's ad valorem tax revenue dropped by twenty-five percent. We went from collecting fifty-eight million dollars per year to collecting forty-two million dollars per year. Over the subsequent decade, that was over a hundred million dollars in tax revenue that, uh, was foregone by Santa Rosa County. We looked for efficiencies in county government. We reduced our county staff by twenty-five percent, and we did not raise the millage rate. Our millage rate is the same, six point zero nine five three, than it's, than it's been since before I took office. If the L O S T is not renewed at a half cent, we will be forced into that same situation. Again, it has enabled us to pave more roads than we've ever been able to do before and invest more in public safety than we've ever been able to do before. Thank you.
Thank you. So the original half-cent local option sales tax that was passed, uh, by the voters, I think that was very important, and I think it should be renewed. I served on that, the Local Option Sales Tax Oversight Committee for three years before resigning to run for, for this position. Uh, that half cent allowed the county to do a lot of work, to get caught back up, and basically, uh, put a lot of Band-Aids on a lot of issues we've had for many, many decades. And the reason we had some of those issues is, if you look at one of the things that the County Commission did many years ago, in two thousand nine, they voted against or repealed the impact fees that were there, and continued to do so three more times, giving us a budget shortfall for revenue of roughly thirty-three million dollars. I think that was a short-sighted decision, uh, that hurt our, our county and cur- a lot of our infrastructure issues. Uh, the fact that we've had that half cent, though, has allowed us to e- accelerate spending, and we've taken what the citizen has to pay and made it much smaller, where through federal and state grants that have helped us spend, uh, have a lot more money to, to get our projects done that were, they're long overdue. Uh, it's also allowed us to make enhancements to our parks and accelerate the ability to get new vehicles for the Sheriff's Department and, uh, pay for our first responders.
Okay, two things, um, when you are speaking into the microphone, I've been advised that you need to be a little bit closer and speak directly into it, so that the people that are watching it on the stream can hear just fine. Also, if you'll give your name before you answer the question each time, so that those watching who can't read the name tags in front of you will know who it is that is speaking.
Ryan Atkins, thank you.
I'm gonna be right, right up to that microphone. Just because we can hear it clearly in the room, I'm told, does not mean they can hear it clearly on the stream, so you wanna be right up to that microphone.
Ryan Atkins.
Back if we kiss it.
Thank you. Um, that half in, half, uh, cents lost tax, I am for, um, keeping that going, but as far as increasing, um, no, definitely not. I was not for the, uh, them having the, the, basically, what, when they wanted to increase it, uh, and have a special election, I just thought that was a total waste of money. Um, we need to definitely look at what we have now and go through and, and, and manage what we have. There's a lot of assets, there's a whole lot of the ways to, uh, to fund, the things that we need funded, and the people aren't for the, aren't for increasing taxes more and more and more, to pay for things that, that, that they want done that's not getting done. So, uh, like I said, I'm for keeping what we've got now, but if they wanna push it any further, um, I'm gonna fight that teeth and nail. That's pretty much it. Like I said, I'm running for the people.
Uh, Jerry Cooley, um, to, to give you a little history of our county, in nineteen ninety, the first time I took an interest in, in looking at budgets, the total budget for Santa Rosa County was eleven million dollars. This year, it's a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars, and I'll tell you exactly why the one-cent sales tax failed, is because when you ask people for a half cent, and I, and I will tell you, I did not oppose the half-cent sales tax, because I thought I was gonna get a courthouse in the deal, but I didn't. Um, too fast, too quick. The citizens a- agree with me, I think all of you saw a blue truck with a sign in the back of it that said, "No new taxes," and I worked for about five months on that. I did not agree with a full penny sales tax. Now, uh, should the citizens choose, um, to reaffirm that tax, I think there is a lot of good that can be done with it. We, we have seen some in- increases in our budget, but, but I will tell you, uh, anybody that sent me an email, you know what my email is? It's no new taxes at bell south dot net. That oughta tell you something right there. I think you need to live within the means that we're given, and, and, and one of the things that just really, I think, is frustrated to folks, is from eleven million to a hundred and seventy-eight million, have you seen improvements in your infrastructure? You haven't, all right? You've seen marginal improvements. And, uh, this year alone, a budget went up five million dollars. I ask, and should I be elected, I wanna know why the full five million dollars doesn't go directly to the Road and Bridges Department, because that's what the people in Santa Rosa County are looking for. Thank you.
Stacy Bryan, and it is always hard to follow Jerry whenever it comes to no new taxes, 'cause he's been riding with that sign forever. So, but, um, I think the, the issue that we saw with the full cent sales tax when it came up is that we didn't see enough transparency in items that were moved from the General Fund to the loss fund. Um, there were times that we looked at, like, um, Sheriff's Special Communication, um, items were moved from the General Fund to the loss fund, and that freed up money in the General Fund. So I don't think there was enough transparency in where the money was being spent with the loss fund in association with the General Fund. And I think we need to look back at, you know, if we're gonna take and approve another loss fund, even for a half cent, make sure that money is being spent on what we said it's gonna be spent on. Infrastructure is the priority with the county right now, and I think it's still gonna be the priority for the next few years as well. We have seen exponential growth in the Var area, exponential growth in the Pace area, and if we can't pay for that infrastructure, then we're not gonna do right by the citizens. And everybody sees it, this is the same complaint that we've heard over and over again. So until we make some changes and make sure there's transparency in where that money is going, they're gonna be back in the same room four years from now complaining about the same stuff. Thank you.
Okay, so along a similar vein, and Stacy, keep the microphone, 'cause we're gonna now go in that direction. It's kind of a follow-up, but it's a very specific question on infrastructure. How can Santa Rosa County continue to grow commercially and residentially if the infrastructure is not there to support it?
Uh, that's a simple one. Stacy Bryan, and we cannot grow without putting that money toward infrastructure. We do need infrastructure that's gonna be well-thought-out and planned for the community. We can't just go in and start building roads without a long-term plan, so we do need that two-year, five-year, ten-year, fifty-year plan to make sure that we're drawing in the right business and make sure that we're planning for the growth that we need. Um, we're gonna see schools, we're gonna see subdivisions, we're gonna see businesses all come along, and that infrastructure's gonna be the county's responsibility to make sure that we are providing it and not overbearing the people that are living here already. Thank you.
Uh, Jerry Cooley, um, y- you've heard me say it before, and I'll say it again, twenty years' worth of lack of infrastructure, folks. Eleven million dollars to a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars. In nineteen eighty-four, Berry Hill Road was extended, and in the early nineties, Glover Lane and Northup Road, that's the only two big county projects that's been done during that period of time. You wanna talk about job growth and growing a county, uh, site guys come into your community and they look around, they may not even introduce themselves to the Board of County Commissioners, they look around, and when they see grass on the side of the roads and a, and a, and a lack of infrastructure and crowded roads, they get on a plane and they leave from here. Folks, this is vitally important, that we invest. If that means pinching back in other areas, then that's what we need to do. I have been an advocate for this, and you can go back and look for the last twenty years, virtually every year, I've stood in front of the Board of County Commissioners and pointed out that in the fastest-growing, one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Florida, our Road and Bridge Department has received less than ten percent of the total annual budget. Go check my numbers, folks. You can't have, i- infrastructure's not free. You have to have the mindset and the backbone to set that money aside, invest, it, this is all of our future, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, these roads, these turn lanes, these ditches that flood, this is our future, and that's what we have to focus on. And one final thing, I will never vote for a non-paying entity to be placed in commercial highway frontage. I think it's a dumb idea. I'm sorry to say it that way, but commercial frontage is where we bring money into the county. Thank you.
Ryan Atkins, we have to get our impact fees put back in place to get our infrastructure up and running. We've gotta comply with concurrency management. Um, we've gotta comply with codes and ordinances around here. There's a lot of things that are being done, and they're not being done the way they should be done and correctly and, and by the books. And I'm a stickler for doing things by the books. I mean, if I wasn't that way, aircraft would've fell out of the sky. So, we have to do that, and that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to make sure that our infrastructure's in place and we get everything up and running here like it should be, or it's just gonna get worse and worse and worse, and it's gonna drive people out of here. Homes are gonna be foreclosed on, and we're gonna be really in a mess with no revenue coming in, so we have to really press on that issue. Thank you.
Colton Wright. Uh, first, as your Commissioner, let me, let me just say that I will be accessible and I will listen to you. It's clear that the Commission hasn't been listening to the people about impact fees for a long time now. Reasonable impact fees should be enacted in order to have the proper funding for our county's growth. We are not going to have economic development and the continued growth and more jobs if investors and developers, from a business standpoint, don't know what to expect in Santa Rosa County. If you're gonna spend millions of dollars to take a piece of commercial property and invest in it, you wanna know that the, the County Commission and the community is gonna do the right thing, and you wanna know what to, what you have to expect and what the result is gonna be once you invest that money. That's a lot of money to risk, and you're not gonna see that from developers coming in. If you look at the city of Gulf Breeze, look at what happened in two thousand eight when we had the economic recession that we had. If you look inside the city of Gulf Breeze, investors and developers knew exactly what to expect. They knew what to expect because they had strict rules and regulations on how they were gonna have their development in their city. So you had companies come in like Publix, and different companies come in, and you had lots of develop- development during an economic downturn. We can't say that about the rest of the county.
Mike, is, are we gonna, is this the impact fee question, or are we gonna talk about impact fees later?
Well, I have an impact fee question that's gonna come up later, but feel free to answer this one however you wish.
Okay. Lane Lynchard, Santa Rosa County Commissioner, District Five. We can't continue to keep growing unless we invest in our infrastructure, and that's what we've been doing for the past five years since we had the L O S T. Uh, we've also invested in infrastructure through our relationships with F D O T, uh, with H M G P Grants. In my district, in the last ten years, we've done twenty million dollars' worth of stormwater drainage improvements. Uh, these are retrofits into neighborhoods that were developed before there were state stormwater standards, let alone local stormwater standards. So these projects are very expensive. Infrastructure is, uh, is, is a monumental undertaking. But we worked through the process with the Transportation Planning Organization. The biggest infrastructure project in Santa Rosa County, uh, in the next few years is going to be in my district, in Gulf Breeze. Uh, Highway ninety-eight is going to be six-lane. That project is fully funded, it's a seventy-eight million dollar F D O T project, and it's taken years to get to this point. Um, but we're there. Uh, the next segment is going to be the Navarre segment of Highway ninety-eight. These are, again, they're, they're major projects, they're things that the county cannot, uh, take on, on our own. But we've, again, been able to pave more miles of county road, resurface more miles of county road than ever before. Uh, in my district, in the next two years, we will pave the last mile of county-maintained dirt road. Part of that is through a dirt road paving project that we've had over the last twelve years, and part of that is through the Restore Act. Part of our multi-year implementation plan is dirt road paving, so we will no longer have to bring the road grader down to District Five. Uh, thank you, Mike.
Well, we'll just jump to, uh, impact fees, and we're gonna be coming this direction down the table, so Lane, I'll leave it with you. Um, talk to us about impact fees and what, if any, uh, structure there needs to be with that, and is it going to be enough money, is the other thing? Does it do any good to raise impact fees or impose impact fees if it doesn't solve the problem?
Thank you, Mike. Lane Lynchard, County Commissioner for District Five. I support reasonable impact fees. When I got on the Board, there was an impact fee in place for infrastructure. Um, again, that was in two thousand eight. We entered the Great Recession, uh, Ki- Santa Rosa County and counties throughout the state of Florida suspended the imposition of impact fees, uh, in order to help our residents who were buying or, or building a home. It took years to get out of that recession. It was one of the longest and slowest recoveries we've ever had. So, yes, we voted three times to suspend the impact fees because we were required to. That's what we had to do. In order to suspend them, we had to vote every year on it. And then we ended up terminating the impact fee because our study was dated and would no longer be valid, uh, for us to reimpose that impact fee. Over the past few years, obviously, the, the economy has flourished, uh, the building industry has boomed, uh, we have contracted for and received an updated impact fee study for, uh, transportation and public safety. I anticipate that, uh, we will have that on our agenda next month. It's been delayed because of the coronavirus, but also because of the school board's impact fee that, uh, they requested and we imposed earlier this year, uh, was tied up in litigation, and the school board's impact fee has now been suspended. Uh, the temporary injunction was entered, uh, that prohibits us from collecting that, uh, impact fee. And I suspect, uh, the school board's going to have another bite at the apple as well. Colton?
Colton Wright. So, let's remember that what happened to Santa Rosa County's population during that recession. So we talk about the recession of two thousand eight, and yes, we, they, they voted to suspend the impact fees in two thousand nine, and then again, and then again. But what happened to our population during that time? Yes, the recession hurt a lot of businesses and a lot of people, but our population continued to grow, year over year during that time. So there's still a reason why people are coming to Santa Rosa County. So I think it was a short-sighted decision, and it was a knee-jerk reaction, to suspend those time and time again. I think it goes back to a lack of planning that I've seen from the County Commission as a whole for years. It's very reactionary, it's daily management and a game of whack-a-mole, putting out the fires every day rather than actually thinking about what's gonna happen two years from now, five years, ten years, twenty years down the road. I think reasonable impact fees are necessary, they are not going to be the, the golden goose that's gonna take care of everything in our county. You know, we have to make sure we have diversity in our, in our revenue sources. Property tax is gonna be important, you know, we need to keep our property taxes low, but that's one leg of the stool. Impact fees is another, and the local option sales tax gives us one more leg to that stool, so we have a nice balanced economy.
Ryan Atkins, um, yes, I'm for the impact fees. We've got to get the impact fees in place, um, the sooner the better. They're not gonna cover half of what we need to do to fix the infrastructure. I mean, we're really gonna have to trim, trim down a lot of stuff, look at where we can save, uh, get rid of assets as far as land that we're, we're holding on to, that we're not using, anything else that we're holding on to that we can get rid of. Um, but we've gotta get it in place to start hel- helping bring it where we need to be. Um, like, and like I said before, concurrency management, it has to be done at the same, you know, time that there, there, these impacts are, are going in. If we don't, um, like I said, it's just gonna cost us more and more and more. Um, the big thing that a lot of people haven't been able to tell me, and, and I've really wondered, is, is why is it costing so much, uh, for the, um, paving the roads now? Uh, I think since sixteen, it's, it's doubled or something? And nobody can tell me why. They say, "Well, the, the labor hasn't went up that much, material hasn't went up that well." So explain to me, and, and I know what's going on here, everybody else does, and they're taking advantage of, of a lot of people, and that's, that's gotta stop. We, we've got to put our foot down and say, "We're not gonna pay it." You know, just because it, it's a county, uh, or a government contractor, a city contractor, everybody sees dollar signs, and that's all they want, and that's gotta stop. If we work together and, and, and push that out of here and be honest and open with everything, we'll get what we want done. But that's pretty much it. Like I said, we've gotta get them, and it won't solve everything.
Uh, Jerry Cooley, um, folks, a- as I said earlier, uh, you have to take care of yourself first. Um, we've gotta do a better job. The five million dollar increase that we had this year, we, we, we should've immediately put that in the Road and Bridges Department wi- without any argument whatsoever. I, I, I don't wanna grow government, I wanna furnish services to you without adding more employees. Uh, so, there is several pieces to this, but before we reach out and ask everybody, we, I wanna be firm about this, that we need to do better, we need to focus our energies more. Uh, as far as the impact fee is concerned, I'm in favor of it. Uh, two differing things for me. As a County Commissioner, I'm gonna embrace the school board. Uh, we, we, we saw some periods of, um, uh, wasn't get- wasn't getting along too well. Um, I, I think we're, we, we should all be on the same team. Uh, the other, uh, differing opinion that I have, and there's multiple ways to do an impact fee, I favor a cost per square foot. Uh, the school board would have a dollar a square foot, the county would have a dollar a square foot, and, and the most important reason that I would want to have the impact fee set up that direction is because we're gonna wipe out affordable housing in Santa Rosa County. Uh, when you, when you start putting eight, ten, and sixteen thousand dollars' worth of impact fees on a twelve-hundred to fourteen-hundred square-foot house, guess what? Your, 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 your new folks that are moving in here aren't gonna be able to afford it. You're gonna wipe out your workforce housing. Uh, I, I, I welcome all the neighbors that have come to the community that, that I love, um, but we've all got to make sure that everybody pays a little bit to keep things going. Thank you. Thank you.
Stacy Bryant, District One. I think impact fees is a step in the right direction because we are wanting new growth to pay for new growth. We can no longer just depend on raising taxes or asking people to have an extra half-cent sales tax to pay for new growth. Will it slow down growth? I've heard people make that argument. Well, it may, but you know, maybe it's a time that we take a little slower approach, make sure that we're able to meet that infrastructure need and as we've seen over the last few years is that no matter what the economy is doing, our area is growing exponentially. So we need to be able to keep up with that. And when we have, as we've seen in District One, when we feel like there's not been enough transparency and that we feel like we're being controlled by special interests with our current county commissioner, that's where we need to step in and say, "Hey, look, if we're going to do impact fees, let's show them that this is going to be an impact fee upfront, not necessarily passed to the home buyer or the home builder in the very end." So I think this is a step in the right direction, reasonable impact fees for schools and infrastructure.
Lane, did you want to follow up? I saw the little indication.
If I could, I think we can have 30 seconds.
Certainly.
Just wanted to address, Jerry brought up the school board and I agree, we do need to work better together with our school board. Education is very important to me. My son is 16. He's a, he will be a junior at Gulf Breeze High. He's been in Santa Rosa County schools since he was in pre-K. We do need to work better with our school board. We have a great school system and it's imperative that we stay at the top of the rankings in the state. Three weeks ago, I reached out to our school board because we have $32 million in CARES Act funding that's coming to Santa Rosa County that we have to spend by December. I have reached out to the school board, invited them to the table, and they have since put together a plan that uses a portion of the CARES Act funding to purchase technology that's going to help with remote learning for our students. We're going to talk about that at our meeting on Thursday.
Ryan, you kind of indicated you wanted to say something as well.
Yeah, I was just going to say with Jerry as far as the affordable housing, we do need affordable housing here. Starting homes at $200,000 is not affordable housing in my book.
Okay. And just so you know, the reason I'm jumping in and allowing this is because we're not real legalistic in the rules on this, okay? The whole point of this is to have a conversation. So if you've got something you want to add, I mean, we're going in order, but once the question's over, feel free, indicate that you want to say something, you will be allowed to say something, okay? I'm not that concerned about the time here. The purpose of this is to educate the voters, not to keep a stopwatch and a buzzer, right? So here's a, yeah, go ahead.
If I'm in.
Might need the mic. I don't know why the mic's dead, but borrow Lane's there.
Thanks. Thank you, Lane. Colton Wright. It's really loud.
That one really works.
So let's get back to the school board and the relationship with the school board and the Board of County Commissioners for just a moment. One meeting I remember particularly that was a joint meeting between the Board of County Commissioners and the school board was to discuss impact fees. And I watched the county commission act as if they had no idea they were in the room. So it's going to take a lot to rebuild that relationship than to let things go on the way they have been. And my opponent was one of the people that was, has been on that board that whole time and if the relationship was supposed to have been strong, I want to know what he's done to make it stronger over the last 12 years.
Thank you, Mike. I think that's a simplistic view of what happened at the meeting with the school board. My problem with the impact fees at the time had to do more with the process that got us to that point. I looked at other counties throughout the state and there had been a series of public hearings and meetings, in one case up to 17 meetings over a 12-month or 14-month period, leading to the point where the school board came to the county commission. So that was really my objection. It was to the process. But I support, the next time that we had it on our agenda, I supported the educational impact fees. We moved forward. The school board did their study, they presented it to us, and we enacted that impact fee. Again, the courts have suspended the imposition of that impact fee, but the county BOCC approved it.
Okay, so this question's going to be somewhat lengthy here, but I think it's an important one. Arguably, the two most important things that the county commission does is the budget and guiding growth in the county. I don't know what percentage of variances that are requested get approved, but I do know it's very high. So my question for each of you is that if you get elected to the board, you will be able to appoint somebody to the zoning board and they will be able to make decisions on variances. But ultimately, the board can override, meaning the commission, can override what the zoning board does. So starting, which way did we start last time? Did we start with you, Stacy, last time? Okay, so we're going to start with you, Lane, coming back this direction. So please address county zoning. Is it adequate the way it is? And then include somewhere in your answer, your opinion on the circumstances under which variances should be given.
Lane Lynchard, Santa Rosa County Commissioner, District Five. Thank you, Mike. I think that's a good question. If you look at rezoning applications and variances in the county over any length of period, you will find that a high percentage of them are granted. There's a reason though. When someone comes in to seek a rezoning, they meet with county staff and county staff is going to give them a general indication of whether or not they think that rezoning has a chance of getting passed. Then they have to pay a fee, $1,100 or more, to file that application for a rezoning. So if they don't feel that they have a pretty good idea that they're going to be successful, they're probably not going to file that rezoning application. So there's a vetting process, if you will, before they ever come to the planning and zoning board. Then the planning and zoning board makes a recommendation. If that recommendation is yea or nay, it still comes to the Board of County Commissioners. We hold a special meeting, review the circumstances and facts in the case, and then make a decision on whether or not to approve the zoning. There was another part of your question there with guiding growth in the county. Geographically, is that what you're speaking?
Well, the commission pretty much guides the direction the county is going. And it's a very broad question, but in terms of sitting on the county commission, clearly you're making decisions that go far beyond just the budget. You're making decisions about what the county's going to be doing over the next several decades, not just over the next four years. So what is your vision for the growth of the county?
Absolutely. And right now, we're going through a complete rewrite of our land development code. We started that a long time ago and it's dragged on. It's been delayed because of the coronavirus, but I've pushed to speed that process up. We're having a public hearing, public workshop next week. We're going to have another one, I think, the first week of August. The goal is to have a land development code that more fits, that fits with where we are now as a county. Because we are no longer the sleepy, small Santa Rosa County that we were when that land development code was enacted. And many of the things we deal with, the biggest problems and heartburn people have with development, many times is on property that has been zoned R1 since zoning was implemented in the county 30 years ago. So we don't have the discretion to deny the application for a preliminary plat or a set of construction plans for a subdivision. If they meet the legal requirements, it's just like you going down to the tax collector's office, applying for your driver's license and passing your test. If you pass the test, our tax collector can't say, "Well, I don't think you're going to be a good driver" and refuse to give you a driver's license. If you meet the requirements, you get your driver's license. If you meet the requirements to develop land in your, in whatever the underlying zoning district is, be it HCD or R1 or R2, you're entitled to pull that preliminary plat or get that construction permit. So what we need to do is align our land development code with the goals and the vision that people in our county have now. And I think that is going to be more protection for wetlands and sensitive areas, more protection for green space, trees, shoreline setbacks and those types of things. So we're, I'm confident we're going to see that in our land development code soon.
Colton Wright. So let me start by saying, I did serve on the zoning board for four years and in that time I became intimately familiar with the land development code. And it was extremely outdated. A land development code rewrite is a very intensive process, no doubt, but it's long Clearly, this is something that should have been started five or six years ago. It was immediately upon joining the zoning board, it was pretty obvious that we were getting the same requests for numerous variances and conditional uses time and time again. That told me that oftentimes, is my going dead? Oftentimes, those are things that it was pretty clear that that was probably going to require a land development code change. Now, as far as the zoning board versus the county commission, I view that relationship a little bit like Congress. I think the zoning board has the ability to be a little bit more like the House and the county commission a little bit more like the Senate. So you've got one group that may be a little more lenient with how they look, view things. They oftentimes don't have the same background, the same knowledge of the land development code and oftentimes a legal system. And then when they make a decision, you have the county commission that's a lot more like the Senate, the older statesmen, those with more maturity, more knowledge. And that's kind of a check and balances there. What was the second part of your question?
Well, it has to do with the criteria upon which variances ought to be issued, which you've kind of addressed, but feel free to expand on that.
Well, and look, you know, we are bound by the law, right? So if the land development code says something, and I'm a strong believer in property rights, so a person's private property, you know, unless you can prove a reason why they shouldn't do something, they should have the ability to do so. And, you know, I do believe that when the county attorney says, you know, "We are required to grant this variance based on the considerations," I think that's reasonable. But going back and changing the land development code is imperative. Should have been done a long time ago. I'm glad we're finally doing it.
The board, the zoning boards, if we've got a board, we should listen to our boards. I mean, they're the ones that's supposed to be doing all the footwork and relaying back to us what's really going on out there. If we don't trust them and listen to them and do what they say, then what's the point in having them? You know, we've got a whole bunch of different boards doing a bunch of different things and that's people's putting in their time. If you've got trustworthy people in there doing that, we need to trust them. As he was talking about with the development code, it needs to be written to what we want. You know, like I said, we're our worst enemies. If we want things done a certain way in our county, we're the ones that need to make sure it gets done that way. We put it in place, then we follow it. We don't waver. Waver is not acceptable in my book. You go by the book. Like I said, if it's a code, an ordinance, you adhere to it. And I don't know why it's so hard. It's not rocket science here. We just need to do that and make it happen and we can do that here. But like I said, we've got to get the right people in there that will do it, not make any kind of backdoor deals or any of that other kind of stuff because I'm not about it and I don't want to see it here anymore. I want it out of here and that's why I'm running.
Jerry Coe. Couple interesting facts. The previous zoning board, before the complete board was removed, was passing about 98% of what was put in front of them. The city of Gulf Breeze, nobody even asked for a variance because they know what the answer is. And I want to share with you that I've been a champion of open government for many, many, many years. And I'm going to tell you, when we start talking about this land development code, it's my belief that it needs to be done in the county commission chambers with a camera on, a microphone, so that our citizens can watch the great debate to see how we come to conclusions and they should be allowed to openly participate in that. It's ultimately important that the land development code, it definitely needs to, we need to go through every word of it. I'll tell you this, should I be elected, that's what I'm going to propose, that all discussions of everything that involves your tax dollars or your life in Santa Rosa County needs to be done out in the open where you can see it. I think it's just, I think it's just very important. I think we get the input from the citizens and when you start talking about the direction of the county, I have actively, I'll give you all a prime example. A gas station was going in in the south end of the county. I involved myself a little bit with that and the community needs to have a place where they can say, "Hey, this, seek out this restaurant, seek out this." We, you know, at one time, our county, we would take anything that came along as far as growth. We need to, I think, I think we've gotten to a point now where we need to be a little more selective and get out in front of it so we build the communities that you, the citizens, are looking for. Thank you.
I'm going to make you repeat the question because it's been a little while.
It's been a while. The question has to do with the development of the county. I guess we never really did get to the budget, so I'll ask that in a future question. But the two big things that the county commission does, controls the budget and guides the county for frankly decades to come. And there are a lot of variances that get approved as growth happens. So the question was really twofold, but I guess if someone else answered budget directly, let's save that for the future, a future question. So in terms of the land development code and in terms of offering variances and granting them in such a high number, what is your opinion of that?
Well, that goes back to just about what everybody up here said, is that the LDC does need to be rewritten. With 90-something percent of the variances going through, we know that there's already some things in there that were put in place years ago before we've gotten to the growth that we've seen now. So that's a good start. And then the next part is we've got to make sure that whomever we nominate to the LDC has our land development code board to make sure that the variances are done. We need to make sure that there are people that with open minds enough to take in, read this and look at it and see if these things are what we're following still. Because once the LDC is rewritten, we've got to make sure that people are not putting things in there because they've experienced it once and then we wind up with a 600-page LDC that nobody wants to follow. We need to, this is a tough question when it comes to this, but it starts with the LDC being rewritten and putting people into that position that's going to take and have an open mind and be able to look at whether or not these codes are the ones that we need to follow or do we need to step back and change some of them? So it's a growth process and not a matter of fact. So even in 10 years from now, we'll probably see the LDC need to have changes done to it as well.
Okay, now this question's really going to be the detailed one, that's going to be the tough one to answer, and we are going to start with you, Stacy, because we're going that direction.
Thanks.
Seems there's consensus that the land development code needs to be rewritten. Please be very specific as to how it needs to be rewritten and what should be changed.
Well, for example, I have a neighbor in my subdivision who needed to build a garage on the side of his house. There is a certain setback that you have to have from the property line, but when his house was initially built, it was moved over more toward the center of the property, so it did not allow his garage to be built on the side of the house, an extra garage, by 18 inches. So this was part of it and when he met in front of the zoning board, they turned him down for an 18-inch difference between what was in the LDC and what variance should have been. So that's just a prime example. So he did not even follow up on it afterwards. We talked to him afterwards because we saw the sign in his yard and we said, "Hey, you know, what kind of variance were you trying to put in?" And he told me, went back and researched it, and he was so disgusted with the fact that 18 inches was going to be what kept him from building the garage onto his house, that he decided not to follow up on it. So that is about as specific as you can get as some of the things that we've seen. Thank you.
Jerry?
Jerry Coe. You know, we have a lot of nuts and bolts in the land development code and that's good. One of the things that I think that we need to also include more and more in the land development code is protection of is protection of wetlands, a greater level of them. Protection of heritage trees. There's a whole host of things that I think needs to be added to the land development code. You know, we're, we're talking about building communities here. This community, the county is important to me. And, and we, we've got to make sure that, that we have some things in that land development code, that we make sure, you know, green spaces. One of the things that was proposed in the land development code was an additional 15 foot barrier near jurisdictional wetlands. I think that's a good idea. An undisturbed 15 additional feet. This is our county. This is where we live. And one of, one of the things that, that should I be elected is I think we need to immediately start with water protections in our land development code. I'm going to tell you folks, if you don't have clean drinking water, you don't have economic development and you don't have a tax base. And, and that is a big part that I think needs to be expanded in the land development code. Thank you.
Ryan Adkins. Our land development code needs to be written. Thinking about everything that's going to affect, okay? There's, there's so much I've seen of places I've lived, zero lot lines, destroying all the trees, affecting all the wildlife. We need to protect that. We need to protect that for our kids, their kids. And it's got to start now or it's just going to get worse. So that would be the big thing, leave so many trees per, per acreage. And I would say the homes should be on probably, you know, quarter, a half acres. People need to decide on what they want, but I would like to see it because I hate, I hate seeing everything gets, just getting cleared out. And, and I hate seeing wildlife diminish. And that's what I'm all about. So protecting what I can and where I can.
Colton Wright. So the time I was on the zoning board, there were numerous times where we had some land development code updates that came before the board that we talked about and we would, overwhelmingly, we would pass them and they would go to the county commission and then they would get turned down. One of those things was a bicycle and pedestrian path project that would require developments over a certain size now to require space for sidewalks and bike pad paths and, and green space. And I found that to be somewhat frustrating because I thought, here we are trying to plan our community and do something that was going to make people want to, to move to our area. And I thought young families, seems to me like a lot, a lot of young families and mothers would want to have safer places for their kids to ride their bikes and walk and jog than in the middle of the street. Another specific thing I think our, our land development code could, could change. Why don't we make sure that our streets are wide enough in a new development? If they don't have a lot large enough and enough driveway space to park all the vehicles. You know, you go, you have an 1800 square foot house with a driveway that's just big enough to fit two cars and the household has four cars in them. Now their neighbor across the street parks their cars in the street. Now you can't even get a school bus down the street. That's a bit of a problem and that's a safety issue and it's a public safety problem. So there's some requirements we could change there. To the environmental note, we certainly need to make sure we're, we're doing a better job of protecting our heritage trees. You know, we're known for our naval live oaks and our magnolia trees. And yet we have a land development code that basically encourages clear cutting to go in and completely wipe everything out and start from scratch. That just doesn't seem like being a good steward of the environment to me.
Lane Lynchardt, District Five. I think this is part of the problem with the land development code rewrite. I started making notes and just kept going. And the project just, again, it's, it's so comprehensive that, that it does just balloon. But I agree, we, we definitely need more protection for wetlands and sensitive lands, more green space in subdivisions. One size does not fit all though. One glaring oversight that exists in our land development code that I've, I've brought up to staff time and again. And, and that we are going to revise in our new land development code is PBD property, planned business district property in Santa Rosa County is the golden ticket. And you can do anything you want with it without having to get it rezoned. It's different from a PUD. So that's a glaring omission in our, in our land development code that we're going to fix. I think minor variances, we need to have more guidance for staff so that minor variances, you know, seven foot fence instead of a six foot fence can be done administratively rather than requiring somebody to go to the zoning board and then in front of the Board of County Commissioners to handle something as simple as that. I think we need a hardline protection for wetlands and shoreline setbacks. Several years ago, I pushed to adopt best management practices for sedimentation protection, increasing the effectiveness of buffers for development and construction near wetlands and waters in Santa Rosa County. We looked throughout the country, staff did a lot of research and we put those best management practices in place. Sidewalk requirements have come up time and time again. And it all comes back to something someone raised earlier, which is affordability of housing. Not everyone can afford to live in a subdivision that has sidewalks. So we have to be very careful about how restrictive we make our code and how nice we make developers build their subdivision. Because there, there's a vast number of people who cannot afford to live in a subdivision with sidewalks and amenities that, that some of us take for granted. So I think we need to be very careful about those types of amendments to our land development code. And one quick county fact when it comes to green space and wetlands protection. Santa Rosa County has over 250,000 acres of land that is in conservation. 39% of all land in Santa Rosa County is in some form of conservation. There are only 11 Florida counties that have a higher percentage of land in conservation. So we have shown time and again that, that we are concerned about protecting our waters through the work that we're doing with the Restore Act to stop once and for all the discharge of effluent into the Navar Sound. That is going to happen within the next four or five years. We will no longer discharge treated effluent into, into the Santa Rosa Sound. Part of our multi-year implementation plan will remove the, or eliminate the discharge of effluent into the Blackwater River in Milton once and for all. Once we stop that, it will never start again. Part of, the other part of our multi-year implementation plan is eliminating septic tanks inside the city limits of Gulf Breeze. We are going to make changes and improvements that are going to improve the water quality in Santa Rosa Sound, East Bay, the Blackwater River, Pensacola Bay for decades to come. And the land development code will have an important part to play in that with increased buffers around wetlands so that those wetlands that serve as filters don't get overrun with stormwater discharge.
The Florida Panhandle counties have a once in a lifetime opportunity. Just because it's once in a lifetime doesn't mean it's a good reason. Because it happened once in a lifetime and it was a terrible thing. And it's hard to believe it was a decade ago, but the BP oil spill and it's really, it's been a decade. Can you believe that? April of 2010. But the Restore Act and the Restore Funds, which was the settlement from that, has potentially billions of dollars that are going to be spent across the Florida Panhandle. Obviously not all of it in Santa Rosa County, but some of it is going to be spent in Santa Rosa County. Starting with Lane, because we're now moving in this direction along the table. Please address how you would like to see Restore Fund money spent in Santa Rosa County.
Thank you, Mike. Lane Lynchardt, District Five. I have been involved in the Restore Act since its inception. I participated in drafting the, the terms of the Restore Act. I went to Washington DC to lobby for the Restore Act when it was stalled in Congress. I have been intimately involved with it since 2010. April was the 10th anniversary of the BP oil spill. It kind of got overlooked by COVID-19 obviously, so our attention was, was elsewhere. The Restore Act and the other funding sources that have arisen from the BP oil spill will be and already have been transformative for our area. From the first project that was funded out of the NIFWhI, the National Wildlife Federation Funds, which was the acquisition of Escobano Point, just north of here, behind Chalk Tall. If you haven't been out there, go out there. It's an absolute treasure in Florida, old Florida on the bay. To the NERDA projects that, that have gone on out at Navar Beach with the construction of a new pavilion, both Gulfside and Soundside, to what I alluded to earlier. Taking the effluent discharge and eliminating that as a source of pollution into Santa Rosa Sound, eliminating effluent discharge as a point of pollution into the Blackwater River and reducing the number of septic tanks on Soundside Drive in South Santa Rosa County, which is a project that's being designed right now, fully funded. Eliminating septic tanks inside the city of Gulf Breeze, a project that's in our multi-year implementation plan. I sit also on the Board of the Gulf Consortium, which administers the state expenditure plan. Santa Rosa County's share of that's about $13 million. I've, they've asked me and I serve on the finance and audit committees for the Gulf Consortium. It's, it's hard to overstate the importance of what we're going to realize as a region, as you alluded to, not just Santa Rosa County. Triumph, Triumph Gulf Coast, that's a billion and a half dollars that's being put to work in the Panhandle of Florida for economic development. What's that already gotten us? Leonardo, they're making the new trainer for the Navy. They're investing $35 million in Whiting Aviation Park. That's the first tenant for Whiting Aviation Park. They're bringing great jobs to our county. It's going, they're, I believe they're going to serve as the genesis for further economic development at the Whiting Aviation Park. We have so many tools at our disposal now. The, and we're just getting into the heart of Restore with our, our, our local dollars, about $25 million. We're going through, again, a revision to our multi-year implementation plan right now. I'm excited about where we are. It's taken a long time to get here because this is the first time anything like this has ever been done. That, that local governments and states banded together, went to the federal government and got approval to utilize those Clean Water Act funds right where the damage occurred. And that's where we are now. We're right in the heart of Restore. And the next few years are going to be vital to the success of that program. And it has already been transformative for our area and will continue to just pay dividends for years into the future.
Colton Wright, candidate for District Five. So the Restore money and that fund and the BP oil spill are certainly uncharted waters for, for our area. And it, it doesn't surprise me it's taken as long as it has. I think that's completely reasonable. I think there's two areas where we have to make sure we, we keep our focus. And that number one would be the environment. Anything we can do to continue to protect our waterways and our wetlands should be the primary focus. The second focus of that is what we can do to help repair and restore our tourist, our tourism industry in our area. Because those are the two areas that were affected most by the BP oil spill was our environment and our tourism.
Ryan Adkins. The Restore Act. We need to take that money and provide training. We need to have something in place if it happens again to immediately address that. To immediately address that. It was devastating. The Navy has booms set up. We, we're really big on environmental. And if we're not, you know, the skipper gets fined, everybody gets fined. We have inspections all the time and we have to make sure and be proactive, not, not reactive. And, and I'm big about that. Like I said, if we don't protect those resources, we can't get them back and it has a long lasting effect. And we, we probably won't never know for sure in our lifetimes what it actually is causing to our, our environment. But that's pretty much it for me.
Jerry Coe, candidate District Three. It has been a great blessing after the fact with, with this money. I, I, and I, and I talked to a lot of folks in Navar about this. The largest sand and gravel aquifer in this county is where you get your water from. And, and I will share with you that there is pressure upon that area and, and potentially a real possibility of something being there that we might not like. As, as your commissioner, I'm going to make sure that we protect and that we use this money to protect these resources. Our environment is being, is at a great stress right now. And, and those dollars in, in that one issue there, if we could take that off the market and make sure that your water supply in the south end of the county remains protected, or at least a large portion of it. I think that would be a good investment. Economic development, we're, we're starting to, I think, move in the right direction. I would like to share with you that at one time, we had an economic development organization in Santa Rosa County that spent $600,000 a year and, and didn't have much to show for it. I worked to eliminate that organization. We have a, a new plan in place. I was on the committee that got this started, that made the decision how we do economic development. And we absolutely have to make sure that our team that's in place now and pre-COVID had a full percentage point lower unemployment than the counties on either side of us. We have a good team in place. I think a lot of the Restore money, we've also got to look at economic development for future generations. Thank you.
Stacy Bryan, District One. Triumph Gulf Coast and BP Restore money has been sitting there for a while now. I know that Sheila Fitzgerald's in our current grant department for Santa Rosa County. She's been working hard on trying to get grants for Santa Rosa County. I know that they were needing help in that department as well. I would like to see our county commissioners start pushing more for that money to be released. It's been 10 years, 10 years on the road to recovery from BP oil spill. So we need to take and make sure that we're giving her all the help that she needs there in the grant department. But I'd also like to see the county open up some grant workshops for people and private citizens and businesses that also were affected by the VP oil spill to make sure that private citizens as well can obtain some of this money. If you look at Triumph Gulf Coast and the amount of projects that are on there, there are quite a few for other counties as well. And if you look at the number that Santa Rosa has compared to some of the other counties, we're still at the lower end of it. So if all this money is available for all the Northwest Florida counties, we need to start pushing for that money to come and be released and make sure that we're using it now. Because right now with COVID-19, we've seen all these private businesses starting to go under locally. So let's do what we can to help them out as well. There's never a greater emergency than when private businesses in your own county are going under. Thank you.
Lane indicated he wanted to say something.
Thank you. And a couple of things. I agree with, with what Ryan said earlier. Workforce training is imperative. Just less than a month ago, Triumph was involved in a workforce training project at, through Lachlan Technical School up in Milton for HVAC technicians and pipe fitters. That program filled up. That gives good, solid jobs to our residents, especially right now when we're dealing with COVID-19. As Tracy alluded to, or I'm sorry, Stacy. We, we have an opportunity to provide workforce training, retraining to people whose jobs have gone away because of COVID-19. In terms of what we've received so far, eight and a half million dollars for Leonardo. There are other projects out there that we have, we announced three at our last commission meeting that are going to land in the Santa Rosa Industrial Park East. An industrial powder coating company, CNC machining company and manufacturer of renewable energy material. So we're working, our grants department is working and our economic development department is, is working. And they are all pulling on the same rope, trying to lift our economy.
Does anybody just want to comment before the next question? All right. Well, this next question requires me to use a four-letter word. So if you've got delicate ears, you might want to cover up. That word is BRAC. The Base Realignment and Closure. We have not had that recently and it's not visible on the horizon, but there's always the looming threat that the federal government but there's always the looming threat that the federal government is going to force military bases across the country to close because Washington simply doesn't have the money to fund them all. And we've been fortunate in previous BRAC commissions that we have escaped serious cuts in the Panhandle. But knowing that that is a potential threat and knowing the importance of the military to Santa Rosa County, what would you do to preserve, well, to use the words, preserve, protect, and defend our military bases? And I believe we finished with Stacy, so Lane, we'll start with you on this question.
Thank you, Mike. Lane Lynchard, District Five. I would keep our foot on the gas when it comes to protecting Whiting Field. We have buffered eight thousand acres around Whiting Field, protecting that base from encroachment, from development. We don't need to slow down. That project, that process is ongoing. We do that every year, and we've been very successful at it through the years. Another way we protect Whiting Field is through development of Whiting Aviation Industrial Park. Leonardo, they're building a one-hundred-thousand-square-foot, again, thirty-five-million-dollar investment adjacent to Whiting Field to service and maintain the new trainer that's going to be used for one-hundred percent of the Navy pilots. So that provides a great incentive for the Navy to maintain that training center at Whiting Field because all of the maintenance and warranty work can be done through the fence. We have a one-of-a-kind, through-the-fence agreement with Whiting Field to allow tenants in that aviation park access to the runways at Whiting Field. Another Santa Rosa County fact most people don't know, Whiting Field is the busiest airspace. They do more airport operations than any other airport in the world. Over a million airport operations per year. Two fully functional airports at Whiting Field. We're very fortunate to have Whiting Field. They are an incredible economic engine for our county, and we have to do everything we can to strengthen our position if we do run into another round of BRAC.
Colton Wright, candidate for Commission for District Five. We're very fortunate to have so much military in our community. And Whiting Field is an integral part of that. And anything we can do to continue to strengthen our relationship as a county with the Navy and to protect that base is vitally important. It's also important, though, that we look to our base to the west of us in Pensacola and look at Pensacola NAS, and we look at Herbert and Eglin and Duke Field as well in Oaklusa County. Because the men and women in the armed forces in those counties and at those bases, oftentimes, they choose to live in Santa Rosa County because of our good quality schools and our low crime and our nice cost of living. So we need to make sure we're looking at more than just the Navy, and we are, you know, looking at all of the armed forces in our area. But it's also important for us to remember that we can't rely simply on our military in our community. And I think if you look at one of the big economic drivers, if we were to have a BRAC and one of these bases was to move, this would crush our county because we haven't done enough to make sure that our economy locally is as diverse as it needs to be.
Ryan Adkins. With my twenty years in Navy, I know BRAC all too well. A lot of places, we used to have to write pretty much everything that, you know, what we do and why we need to keep this base open. And I'll fight tooth and nail for Whiting Field. Like I said, it's been there ever since I've been here, and it trains a lot of people, and it employs a lot of people. And it's got to stay here. If it was to go, it would be a big blow to our county. So like I said, I'll be fighting tooth and nail to keep them planes flying and them pilots getting trained here. I mean, that's even our health care. You know, I drive all the way to Pensacola then, and I might get lost over there, so thank you.
Well, there's no doubt Whiting Field is an engine. We have, and we quite often honor our relationship with the military. And as your Commissioner for District Three, I would continue to do that. I think we have done a good job of protecting with property purchases around that. One of the things that I think probably also strengthened our hand is Scammy County made a land swap. So Scammy County has actually built an airfield that they will move operations to, and I think that is a good thing. I'll tell you, I appreciate the military. I have many friends that have gone through the military, and I know a lot of civilians that work at Whiting Field. A good friend of mine, he's on one of the fueling crews out there. And I'll tell you, the sound of freedom doesn't bother me. I enjoy hearing those planes fly over my head. I enjoy hearing those helicopters fly over my head. Sometimes even go outside so I can watch them. They are a big part of our community, and I would do everything in my power to make sure that we maintain the relationship and maintain the base in Santa Rosa County.
Stacy Bryan, District One. We've been very fortunate over the last ten years not to have to mention base realignment and closures in Santa Rosa County. I think we've done a good job of keeping that open line of communication with the leaders of Whiting Field and those in our military bases. We need to keep that up. We need to make sure that we address their needs and as well as addressing the needs of the people that are coming in for the military bases as well. Proper infrastructure, proper schools, make sure that this is a desirable place for them to want to be in. It's not just about the base itself, it's about all the people that go there, who work there, and who retire here, and who come back here even after they retire from someplace else. So keeping that open line of communication, making sure that we keep this as a desirable place for them, is probably a top-notch thing that we need to do as county commissioners.
So military jobs, you have all acknowledged, are very important to Santa Rosa County, but they're not the only jobs in the county. So starting with Stacy and going that direction down the table, if you can please address, one, the kinds of jobs we need to attract to Santa Rosa County, and, two, what you as a Commissioner can do to facilitate that and try to be as specific as possible, please.
Stacy Bryan, District One. I've been fortunate enough to listen and talk to a lot of people in the county, and there are a lot of great ideas about how to bring in jobs to the area. I know that the needs in Navar and the south end of the county are different from the needs in the north end of the county. You know, it's all going to go back to infrastructure. It's all going to be back, going back to making sure that we have what people are looking for coming in here. I know when I started my small business that, you know, I did it based on what the needs of the area was. And then we have grown and expanded since then only because people wanting to come to the area and come to work for me. I've had, I actually have a lady moving down from Tennessee who's going to work down in our area now. Because the first thing that she did is she looked at the schools. She goes, how are the schools down there? And what was the housing market like? So these things are important in bringing in people in. So if you want to get specific about what jobs that we need and what areas, it's going to all depend on the areas because, like I said, Navar exponential growth. It's not seeing, you're not seeing the same kind of growth in the north end of the county. So what we need here is going to be a little bit different from other areas. So let's just start, my mic is dying. So let's start talking to people, listening to people, and finding out what are those areas that are drawing in people? And what resources do we have? And then start moving forward on that.
Jerry Cooy, candidate, County Commission, District Three. As I mentioned earlier, I've had a long relationship with our economic development folks, sitting on the committee where we made major changes in how economic development is done in Santa Rosa County. And I'm very proud of that. I think we've been heading in the right direction for a long time. Interesting fact, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce will tell you that eighty-five percent of all new jobs come from a company that's less than five years old. I'll tell you what the message is for me. The message is, as your county commissioner, I'm going to be a hands-on county commissioner. I'm going to go talk to these new businesses that are in Santa Rosa County. We're going to push for additional state incentives for people who are already here. Now, I don't want to, I don't want to miss out on the, in economic development terms, they refer to them as elephants. I still want us to look for that big, possibly regional-changing business that might come here. But we have to focus on the businesses that we have. We have a county full of bright, intelligent people, and we've got to make sure that we support them. Now, hand in hand, my comment earlier about embracing the school district because we're all on the same team. We have to expand VOTEC training. I'll tell you right now, it's already been mentioned, we have a wonderful program in Milton, Lachlan, VOTEC. And it needs to be expanded into the south end of the county. You have a lot of your kids down here that are, you know, having to make a forty-five-minute-to-an-hour trip to get to that great training that's happening there. So as we move forward, I'll just tell you, I don't think everybody needs to go to college. And I will also tell you that it costs a hundred and fifty dollars to get somebody to walk up to your front door to change a faucet out for you right now. So there's a, there's a real need for, I mean, I'm not exaggerating, folks. I talked to one of the large plumbing companies, they decided to do repair work. It's a hundred and fifty dollars when they ring your doorbell. You get one hour for that, and then it's seventy-five dollars an hour after that. Auto mechanics, there's all kinds of things that we need to be working for in this county, and it has to be a partnership because I'm going to be hands-on. I'm going to try to expand these businesses in Santa Rosa County. And we need to make sure that the school board comes along with the ride because when they hit the ninth grade, they need to decide if they're going to college or if they're going to vocational training. And we need to be ready to move quick because when we have a chance for a company coming in, we've got to be able to look this company in the eyes and say, hey, we can have specialized training ready for you in three weeks. So that's my thought on the economic development part of that. Thank you.
Ryan Adkins. And like Jerry said, we've got to sort the businesses that we have here. I have a degree in business administration, and pretty much a lot of my background is helping people, supporting people. The doors will close if we don't. I've seen it time and time again. Before I left for the Navy, my brother-in-law worked at the industrial plant. Showed up one day, his chain shut. Guess what? They went to Canada. You know why? We pushed them out of here because it's cheaper to operate outside our county. If we want businesses here, we've got to get infrastructure in place and make sure they can survive here. That means paying decent wages to their employees and not being taxed to death. And that's what I'm going to push for.
Colton Wright, candidate for District Five. I'm glad Jerry brought that up about VOTEC. One of the things that, one of my main goals is to work with the school district along with Pensacola State College to try to put in a vocational school at the south end campus at Pensacola State College, they're on Highway 98. I think it's unreasonable for us to expect parents to think it's okay for their kids to drive all the way to Lachlan. And Lachlan provides our county a wonderful service, but it's just not realistic for kids from the south end of Gulf Breeze, Midway, and Navar to make that trip every day. And it's not reasonable to expect we're going to be able to bust them either. So I think it's a two-pronged approach. Vocational and technical training is very important. We all know we need more plumbers, auto mechanics, electricians, HVAC technicians. But we're also in a world of technology right now where we need information technology. And we're very fortunate on the south end right now that Highway 98 has redundancy with fiber optic, thanks to Cox Media. And they're working on a project doing the same thing up Highway 87. So frankly, the District Four Navar area and the Midway area is ideal for having some type of IT-based companies and information technology parked there as well.
Lane Lynchard, County Commissioner for District Five. I'll tell you what I have done to support our small business. When the COVID shutdown occurred, I called Shannon Ogletree, our Director of Economic Development. I called our county administrator, and I asked them to stand up a webpage and whatever assistance we could offer for local, small businesses in Santa Rosa County. Within a week, Santa Rosa Ready was online. That's a clearinghouse for local businesses to go get information about available grants, the PPP program, the economic investment disaster loans. We have got to support our small businesses in Santa Rosa County. I'm very concerned about our hospitality industry, our restaurants. Those businesses are struggling mightily. And we need to do everything we can to connect them to the resources that are available to ensure their success. On a broader scale beyond the shutdown, I agree with some of what has been said earlier. We do not need to focus on any one company or any one profession. We need a diverse economy. Medical with the Andrews Institute. Technology with App River and AVELEX. Construction, manufacturing, distributing, Goldring, Hackney, Cape Horn. Jerry knows they make a good boat right in East Milton in our industrial park. There is a lot going on in Santa Rosa County. Again, over the last decade, our household income in Santa Rosa County grew twenty-two percent. The state of Florida, twelve percent. We have the fourth highest median income in the state out of sixty-seven counties. We're doing a lot of things right in Santa Rosa County. We don't need to slow down. And we need to protect those businesses that we have, connect them to resources that can ensure their success. And as I've said many times recently, support your local businesses right now. Amazon's still going to be here a year from now or two years from now. But your small, local retailers and restaurants are the ones that are really struggling.
So with this pandemic and with the closures of various businesses, and especially at the beach, I'm certain that county coffers are going to take a hit from sales tax revenue, bed taxes, and other things. I don't know how big of a hit, you may, and if you do, feel free to cite a number. But how would you, how do you think we should best address the county's financial situation in light of the, without question, reduced tax receipts that are going to happen as a result of this current coronavirus closure? And we'll work this way, so Lane, we'll start with you.
Lane Lynchard, County Commissioner, District Five. What we did this year, we're in the middle of our budget cycle right now, actually nearing the end of our budget cycle. We held all of our county departments to the same budget that we had last year. All of the constitutional officers agreed to the same budget that they had last year. We've seen an overall reduction of about eight million dollars year over year. At least that's what we're projecting. What we did two years ago, we had staff perform an analysis of our fund balances and set aside five million dollars as an economic stabilization fund. So we have that five million dollars set aside to assist us through any economic downturns. If we see a severe recession, what I would do is the same thing we did during the Great Recession. We analyze every line in our budget, trim our spending as tightly as we can, hold the line on property tax increases because the last thing that anyone wants in times of economic hardship is to see their property taxes go up. I do not support any increase in our ad hoc property tax rate. We'll get through this. I don't have any doubt that Santa Rosa County will prevail in the fight against COVID and whatever that lays at our feet, whether it's budgetary or economic. If you look at our unemployment rate, before COVID, our unemployment rate was about two and a half percent. One of the lowest in the state. Went up to ten-point-three, ten-point-seven percent, now it's back down in the six percent range. We have the eighth lowest unemployment rate in the state right now. So our economy, our unemployment rate is coming back down already. Now, after the PPP loans go away, we don't know what's going to happen. It's going to depend on whether or not those small retailers and small restaurants can keep their doors open or not. But it comes back to supporting them every way we can.
Colton Wright, District Five candidate. So this is something I know a little bit about. I've owned a business for seventeen years almost. I've owned a business for seventeen years almost. I know what it's like to make a payroll. I know what it's like to have to make those hard decisions when you've got to figure out how to tighten the belt. You know, when revenue coming in the door and customers coming in the door starts to slow down, you've got to figure out what do you cut and where do you hold the line? I know what that's like to have, you know, fifteen different families depend on my business. So when you look at something like COVID- nineteen, I think it's important that we remember how we weather storms in business. You remain positive, you stay optimistic, and you realize that there's brighter days ahead. It's only a bump in the road, it's only a short period of time this is going to happen. We'll get through it. As far as the county budget and the coffers shrinking, I think we have to look at that and we have to, we have to hold the line on a number of line item issues. But I can tell you one thing, there's two places where I'm not going to cut the budget. And that's law enforcement and that's infrastructure. I think those are the two most important things we have facing our county right now. And if that means our Parks and Rec Department and some other areas in the budget need to, you know, sit back for a year or two, I think that's a fair ask.
Ryan Atkins. This COVID's been something just devastating to a lot of people. We're going to get through it. I've said a lot of prayers. I said a lot of prayers before I even started this new journey. And we've got to work together if we want to get through it. I mean, the closer we can get to uniting here, we can make anything possible. But I've seen so much division, there's so, hello? There's so much hate. I mean, there's so much that I'm not proud of here and it hurts me. And I told my wife, I said, that's why I'm running. I said, when I left this place, people ask where you're from and I said, J, Florida. And they go, where? And I said, it's way out there. I said, it's the most friendliest, loving people. They wait you at you, open the door for you. You know, it's the courtesy. I mean, I've lived all over. I've been in California, Virginia, I've seen a lot of things in my life and some I wish I could have forgotten. But, you know, I'm home now and I'm offering what I know my services to make things better here. And we can do it, but we have to all work together and decide what's most important to us. You know, like you just said, public safety has always been my forefront. The infrastructure's next, the jobs, because I've met a bunch of people and they're not registered here, they're just moving here. And I'm like, why is everybody moving here when there's no jobs? I don't understand what they're going to do for a living, but I guess I'll find out soon. But that's pretty much it. Like I said, we work together and we can get through this and we can prosper here again.
Jerry Coe, County Commissioner, candidate for District Three. You know, it seems like to me, it's always interesting that government wants to act different than you do at your house. You know, well, I think government should act the same way you at your house. When you need a new car, you save up money before you go buy the new car. You don't go in debt right out of the gate. Yes, this has been an economic downturn to us, but I have to go back once again and tell you that our budget went up five million dollars this year. And it went up three, right at four million dollars last year. Certainly, we may have to delay some things. Certainly, we may have to consider. But I think it's time for a little out-of-the-box thinking. So let's try some out-of-the-box thinking. Our gas tax went from six percent to twelve percent. And I'll tell you something very interesting happened along the way, that that collection is almost flat, except we have twenty thousand more people living here. And I'll tell you, and folks in Navarre will tell you, and people in the north end and people to the west side of our county will tell you, they buy gas in other places because it's cheaper. Okay? As your county commissioner, we talk about economic downturns here. As your county commissioner, I'm going to propose that we first apologize for that, roll it back to six percent, have a huge Facebook and social media campaign asking people to buy their gas in Santa Rosa County. I think you'd make up two or three million dollars pretty quickly. You know, this is a small downturn. You know, I take you back to Hurricane Ivan, we spent, you know, twenty million dollars and this place was a wreck. You know what? That's some of the fondest memories that I have in my life because our neighborhoods got together and survived. And I never will forget the day we heard the ice cream truck. Every adult there turned into a child. I'm telling you, we were all digging for change to get some ice cream that day. We're going to get through this. You know, I'll tell you, I'm the eternal optimist. My glass is not only full, it's running over all the time. But we get through this. But we have to maintain, and anybody that's paid any attention to me will know, I think county commissioners should do two things, and that's infrastructure and public safety. When I was growing up, a county commissioner was called a road commissioner. All right? It's time to focus the mission, it's time to put it to a fine point and make sure we spend money in the right places. Thank you.
You know, I'm going to make you repeat the question again.
Have I forgotten the question already?
Now, but.
Go ahead.
Okay, so when we're talking about what we're going to do with the decrease in money that we have now and preparing for the future as well. Because we don't know what's going to happen next year. We could have another COVID-20 crisis or we could have anything else happen like that. We've got to make sure that we're spending the money appropriately. I think that we also need to take and look at putting a hold on capital expenditures for right now. We are fortunate, as Lane mentioned, to have five million dollars set aside for emergency funding. We also have, each commissioner has about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they have as a discretionary fund. We've got to make sure that we're using that money in the time of need. And you know, there's more, no more than a time of need right now. I alluded to it before, small businesses are having problems making it in the county. We also need to make sure that if we're taking and spending money on parks, roads, law enforcement, let's just ask and say, hey, what do we need right now and what can we wait? You know, I think Jerry put it, you know, very plainly, saying that what would you do if your family had a lower income money coming in? You would tighten the belts a little bit and look at the expenditures that you have and say, where can we cut? And I'm okay with, you know, people getting out there and giving those ideas and say, look, you know, in my department, we might have a little bit of extra money here. Let's take and see where we can save. And I would go to every department and say, look, you're a county worker, where can we save money? We all know that there is waste in government. We have seen it and heard it for years and years and years. But is anybody listening to that department chief that says, hey, you know what? We've got a little bit of extra money here that we know that we don't spend it. We're not going to get the same amount next year. But guess what? This is the time that we need that little extra money to go back into the coffers to make sure that it is used for our central services. You know, there is nothing more essential than our police department. You know, I am also like what Lane said, you know, I don't want to see property tax go up. There's a lot of people in our community who have paid off their homes and living on fixed income, and they don't need that extra money coming out of their paycheck by having to pay extra property tax. If their social security money is a set amount and they've already budgeted for everything. So same thing with the county. We know what that money is coming in. Let's make sure that we're spending it properly. Let's not take and have expenditures that can wait another year and spending it today and then wondering why we're fourteen million dollars short.
All right, this is my last question before we open up to questions from the floor. A hidden part, excuse me, a hidden part of the commissioner's job that most constituents are completely unaware of, that the commissioners do, is lobby in Tallahassee and meet with the lawmakers at the state. What do you want to see, assuming you get elected? What do you want from Tallahassee?
I think we need a couple of things from Tallahassee. One is Garson Point Bridge. We need their help. The FDOT failed us in the very beginning when they didn't keep up with the contract and with the bridge authority. So now we're taking and paying five dollars for one travel across the Garson Point Bridge. So that needs to be worked out. Obviously, that is going way beyond county government because this is, I know there's a lawsuit against the state in regards to Garson Point Bridge. And the other thing that we need is we need to make sure that as a county, we're putting money together. And in District One right now, Woodbine Road, that's been a big area that we've seen traffic increase, but no money has been set aside for Woodbine Road. So it got turned down by the state last year because we didn't put any skin in the game. If the county's not going to put skin in the game for the infrastructure projects, we cannot expect the state to do so. So we need to make sure that we have that open line of communication with JR and the rest of the Florida legislation. And make sure that we're putting a little skin in the game and let them know that we have, we have a thought and we have an idea that we need to get, I'm trying not to lose the train of thought, but we need to make sure that we're getting into having a plan for these areas and that we're willing to back it up with money into the system.
Can you be a little bit more specific? You said that you want Tallahassee to help with the Garson Point Bridge. Can you be specific as to what kind of help you want?
Well, right now, since they are being sued by the bondholders and if they see that, right now, the north and south end are separated by the Garson Point Bridge and we're not getting that same level of traffic in that area that the infrastructure supports. So we did a great job of fixing Avalon and building, we're going to build a courthouse there. So now the travel is going to be much more expensive for people there to go across the Garson Point Bridge. So what I'd like to see them do is come up with a plan to make sure that they're meeting with the bondholders and the FDOT to see if we can take and lower the Garson Point Bridge toll or even move toward getting rid of it completely, even if we have to sell our own bonds to get it back. Because right now, toll's too much, people's complaining too much about that. And I think it would improve, especially when it comes to emergency evacuation or until they finish the Pensacola Bridge and then traffic is diverted that way.
Okay, Jerry?
Jerry Coe, candidate for District Three. Well, folks, this is going to be a reoccurring theme for me. We have to help ourselves before we ask other people to help us. We have to set aside money, we have to, I can't emphasize this enough. In one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Florida, we spend less than ten percent of the annual budget, have for many years, in our road and bridge department. When you won't take care of yourself, you can't expect other people to do it for you. Now, let's do that. Let's start increasing the road and bridge budget to start out with, to start improving infrastructure. What I would like the state, and certainly I have a relationship with JR and he's proven to be a very good leader for our area. It's about infrastructure. That's the one thing I want to talk to the state about, is infrastructure. I want Highway ninety to be unblocked so I can get through there. I'll tell you, the recent fires that we had and the south end of the county got some of it themselves, but I'm going to tell you, it was miserable. It was so bad on Highway ninety that business owners were delivering water to people who were stranded in traffic and couldn't move anywhere. My focus in my trips going to Tallahassee is going to be about infrastructure funding after we prove to them that we will start making a greater effort with the dollars that we have right now. There are many needs. I know it's being kicked around now. I think it would be a fantastic idea for eighty-seven to fly over and that helps the south end of the county. We need help on Highway ninety. Certainly, there's some projects that are in the hopper now, widening of ninety. Eighty-seven is now complete. We need to keep pressing for to get from Highway ninety at the end of eighty-seven to south of Whiting Field to open that up. But, well, I went on a long ways. But the short answer is, I'm looking for infrastructure dollars from the state of Florida. Thank you.
Ryan Atkins, running for County Commissioner, District Three. I can agree with what he's saying. Our infrastructure has to get in place, but I would be asking them, the state, basically, to get in here and help us with eighty-seven, ninety. We have hurricanes all the time. I've seen that backed up and, I mean, I think people spent the night out there when that hurricane come through on the roads, and that's just ridiculous. If you really are worried about public safety, that needs to be the first priority. And I would be pushing to have that foreland because eighty-seven has been promised to be foreland for decades and it's not. So, you know, we just need to basically just say, hey, this is our number one priority here of getting hurricane evacuation so people can get out of here. Because nobody wants to ride out of Cap Five here, I guarantee it.
Colton Wright, candidate for District Five. So when we talk about going to Tallahassee, I think the thing you need to remember is all about building relationships. Building relationships with not only our local delegates, but also those from other parts of the state to make sure that frankly, the panhandle of Florida, which oftentimes gets forgot about and we're the stepchildren of the state, so that we get our fair share. And, you know, we don't have Central Florida and South Florida taking all the money. When it comes to asking for something from the state, though, my biggest priority is working with DOT and building the relationships there. You know, Santa Rosa County is a unique county geographically. We have a south end and basically a north end. We have a large bay that separates two portions of our county with the only thing tying it together is Highway eighty-seven, which frankly is a long way around for someone that's in the Gulf Breeze. If you're in the city of Gulf Breeze and need to get to Milton, you have a choice either go through Pensacola and take one long way or take the other long way. So the Garson Point Bridge is a tough issue. It's the issue that everyone wants to talk about, but no one really knows the answer on what to do. Because, you know, the state has put themselves in a situation where we have bondholders to answer to and that's going to be a very expensive endeavor if we can do anything with it. But I would propose that we somehow find a way for the county to partner with the state to do something with that bridge, whether that be a partnership in taking it over, either from a management standpoint and a maintenance standpoint, to even taking over the bridge from an ownership standpoint in the state. But I think our transportation issues are one of our biggest issues in Santa Rosa County.
Lane Lynchard, County Commissioner for District Five. I've worked with our representatives throughout the year on many different projects. I'm fortunate enough to have served with Representative Williamson when he was on the Board of County Commissioners and have worked with him since he's been representing us in Tallahassee. I worked with Senator Broxen when he was then Representative Broxen on the largest Gulf Power street lighting project in their history, which was the project that put a thousand streetlights on Highway ninety-eight after we suffered a rash of fatalities in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Senator Broxen and I worked together to get an intersection signalized on ninety-eight that may sound like a small thing, but it happened within about six months of when we made that request, which is light speed when it comes to dealing with DOT and construction projects that may cost three quarters of a million dollars. I've worked with our state representatives and state senators on new soccer fields at Pensacola State College. Pensacola State College came to me asking about workforce training, specifically a truck driver training school at the Pensacola State College South Campus. I proposed that we locate that truck driver training facility in our industrial park in East Milton. I think it's a better location, the existing industrial park for a skid pad than Highway ninety-eight in Gulf Breeze. So we came up with an arrangement where at no cost to the county, we would do a land swap. Now we have twenty-seven acres of land at Pensacola State College that is now being designed for a soccer complex. Talked with Representative, is that my time?
I think that's a low battery on one of the cameras feeding it.
Called Representative Williamson, called Senator Broxen. They were both fully behind the project. We put in for state assistance for design. They both supported it. Unfortunately, the red pen came out this year and it didn't survive. Two years ago, a group of citizens Two years ago, a group of citizens with a heart for service came to me and asked me about installing a Miracle League field at Tiger Point. I immediately got behind the project, called Senator Broxen, actually ran into him at Gulf Power Economic Development Symposium, sat down with Senator Broxen. He thought it was a fantastic idea, called JR, Representative Williamson likewise, asked them for assistance. We got $150,000 for the Miracle League. That was the only project that got funded in Santa Rosa County that year. We got $150,000 from the Miracle, from the state, $110,000 from the Impact 100, and the rest came from county discretionary funds. The Miracle League, start to finish, took less than 14, 16 months to complete. If you haven't been down to Tiger Point Park and seen the Miracle League ball field, you need to go down there. And when they're able to go out there and play again, you absolutely need to go down there on a Friday night and see the smiles and hear the joy that comes from that field. So I have a history of working together with our state delegation on projects that mean a lot to people in Santa Rosa County. I'm going to continue to do that.
Jerry, you have a follow-up?
Yes, Jerry Coe, County Commissioner, District Three. This event tonight is so that the folks that are watching this will understand how we think and how we might govern. So since the Garson Point Bridge was brought up a couple times, I'll share with you my perspective of that. Personally, in my life, I've made investments in things that didn't work out, but I didn't ask the taxpayers to refund my money. It is not the job of the taxpayers of this county nor of the state of Florida to make someone whole on a bad investment. You know, they can do the best they can. There is a contract and it is muddied up, to say the least. But at the end of the day, should that bridge fail, then it fails. And I'd be more than happy to give them 10 cents on the dollar or maybe 25 cents on the dollar. It's not the fault of the taxpayers that a bad traffic study was done, that a bad plan was put in place. I would love to see that bridge thrive and flourish at zero cost, but as long as we keep artificially propping up private investment on this, you know, we're going to have this discussion over and over and over. Well, it's going to be $5 and then it's going to $5.75. Eventually, I mean, if you really wanted to solve the problem, I guess you could charge one person $96 million and then it would be paid off. I mean, how far are we going to take this? You know? I want you to understand my perspective on that and how I think about situations such as that. It's been a bad deal from day one and I'm not about, and trust me, you can go back and check the record, I howled about it quite a bit when proposals were made for us to pay almost the straight price on it. I just don't agree with that. Felt like I needed to share it with you. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have time to ask questions from the floor here, those in attendance. This was scheduled to go till eight. Sorry that I dominated all the questions. I really didn't expect that two hours to go by as quickly as it did. But if you do have a question, raise your hand, I'll come by. And we do want it on mic, of course, because the people who are listening to the stream need to be able to hear the question. Feel free to ask any individual candidate the question. If you want everybody to answer it, that's fine, too. But if your opponent's here, which stays, of course, your case, your opponents are not here, but if you ask of one candidate, the other candidate in the same race will definitely get to answer the same question.
Thank you. My name is Lorenz Kobel. I'm with the Great Navarre Area Chamber of Commerce. We had a meeting with First Saw Command today, and they stated the results of an assessment of incoming airmen were not favorable for our county as far as not feeling welcome and surrounding areas not being culturally diverse. How would you address this with our community?
Did you have anybody in particular? Everybody? All right, if you could each answer that question.
I feel like I have a target paint coming out. I'm not sure exactly how to answer that question or how to solve that problem. I mean, I think Santa Rosa County is a great place to live. We have a diverse county. I don't think we're a separate county. I think we're a diverse county. We have farmlands and very rural areas in the north and then the historic downtown of Milton, the bustling new growth that's going on in Pace, the old city of Gulf Breeze, and then the tourist area here in Navarre. So we are a very diverse county. If someone is having a bad experience in our county, I would do everything we can to improve that experience, but I'm not sure exactly where those feelings would be coming from. I know there is a lot of discussion out there about growth and development, and there probably is a feeling from some people who move here that they're not wanted because of the anti-growth sentiment that sometimes exists out there. I've traveled a fair amount. I can tell you that you will not go to a coastal community in the United States that is not dealing with the same thing we're dealing with in Santa Rosa County, which is population growth and traffic issues. We are not unique. America is migrating from the central of the country to the coasts, and we are a preferred destination. Our economy, near the top in the state. Again, our household income is growing, 22% over the last decade, fourth highest in the state. We do have issues that we have to solve. Absolutely, we have to deal with our transportation issues, and we're trying to chip away at those. It's difficult when our funding is kept as tight as it has been because, again, we have the lowest cost of government per capita in the state, the lowest, $730 per person. The state average is $1,765. So we do a lot with the money that we have. Can you go through our budget and find items that you disagree with? Absolutely. I can go through any budget and find items that I disagree with, but you're talking about paper clips and paper savings rather than department-level cuts that you would have to make to really reduce our budget. We keep it as tight as possible.
Colton Wright, candidate for District Five. So the way I understood the question, it was incoming airmen were concerned about not feeling welcome based on diversity? And that's really a shame. I think that's a statement on what you see on social media and the news and our national issues. I'll say this to them, and I would say, come to Santa Rosa County and actually meet the people that live here and see what kind of hearts we have. I think they'll find that we're probably one of the most outgoing and welcoming citizenries that you're going to find in the state of Florida and frankly, in the entire south. We're very fortunate that we have the beaches and we have Blackwater River and, you know, we have Jay and, you know, all of the diversity we have in our county. There's not a lot of counties in the state of Florida around the country that can say they have what we have. And I would just reach out to those people and tell them if they're concerned about coming to Santa Rosa County, come meet some of the people. Come to my business, come to a chamber event. I think they'll find out exactly what kind of place this is and why they want to live here.
Ryan Atkins. I treat everybody fair and equal, and I'd hate for anybody to tell me that, that they're being treated mistreated, especially in today's, there's so much of that going on in other places. And like I said, it shouldn't be tolerated here or accepted here. And if we want to get things done here, we need to come together, work together and make it happen. But I would not tolerate it and, you know, it's got to be brought up. People can't live with that and never say anything. There's been so much of that that's went on in the past. People need to speak up now and take action and make things right.
Jerry Coe, County Commission Candidate, District Three. I would like for you to convey to them that we are a good county, and I apologize for anyone who feels that way. I would tell you, I could tell you so many examples. The tire store at Highway 90 that bought a man, gave a man four tires because he was a law enforcement officer. He brought his family up here to get them out of the teeth of a hurricane in the south end of the county. The tire store, a Firestone store understood his story, told him to sit down, we're not going to let you buy two tires, we're going to put four tires on your truck while you're here. Those stories are everywhere. People are sharing. You know, I was certainly born here by chance, but I stay here by choice. I will be buried here somewhere in Santa Rosa County. We have great people all across this county, and maybe we should take that extra step. You know, I see a lot on Facebook. I see military guys around and ladies around. I pick up their check. You know, I think that's one thing that we can do. I make it a point to always thank them for their service, to know that they're welcome here. I'm sorry that anybody feels that way because my experiences in our county, I think, is better, but we could always do better than that. Thank you.
Stacy Bryan, District One. My family and I do a lot of volunteer work in the community, and we're very fortunate to come across people all different religion, race, creeds, whatever, who's ever in need. I think it all starts at home. We teach respect. We teach tolerance to our children. We've had this conversation with them about, you know, how do you feel about? And we bring out these scenarios to make sure that we're teaching them the right thing. So I think all of it begins with the leadership that we teach as parents, and then also as we move into county government as well, we need to teach our children respect for others, but we also need to relay that sense of respect for other people as well. So even like people in this room may not agree with me on everything, but that's okay. It's a respect of ideas, respect of where you came from, and that your ideas may be different from mine. So hopefully then, if we keep, you know, teaching our children and our county government shows that we respect each other in a civil manner, that we won't see what we see on a national scale. Thank you.
Hi, Martin Deckham, Navarre. It appears we have at least two elected county commissioners who couldn't be bothered to show up tonight for our Chamber of Commerce event. What is wrong with them?
Was that asked of anybody in particular? You want each of them to answer? All right, whoever wants to take it first?
I'm here. I'll say, I can't answer. Once again, Jerry Coe, County Commission Candidate for District Three. I'm going to tell you, you know, I have, my cell phone number's been out there a long time. It's easy to find. My email address is easy to find. In general, I'm an easy guy to find because I'm usually out somewhere in the community doing something. I will tell you that I've answered every question that's been asked of me. I've responded to every single thing that anybody asked me to do. Heck, along the way, during COVID, we were kind of locked down. I even went and helped a lady put in a new microwave. A county commissioner, being a county commissioner is a dream of mine, okay? I can guarantee you that I'm going to show up to every event. I am going to answer every question that's asked of me, and I'm not going to be shy about it when I give you that answer. I have long-held beliefs. You know, I will tell you, should I be fortunate enough to wind up on this commission, we're going to have a lot of robust conversations, but you're going to know where I stand, and I am always going to be upfront about what I'm thinking. You won't have to guess.
First, I'm not going to say anything bad about my opponents, but I do think that something I offered that they don't, and that's transparency, honesty, and being available. You know, we have all seen and heard in the past of that commissioner not being available for them. And it's about listening to the people. There's a lot of smart people in our county, you know. Your county commissioners, the five that are sitting up there, are not the smartest people in the county. They should be the people that are willing to listen to you when you have ideas, listen to you when you have issues. So that's why I bring to the table. So I am definitely not the smartest guy up on this table here, nor will I be the smartest person in the county, but I'll be always available to listen to you.
Colton Wright, candidate for District Five. Sorry for stepping on you there, Stacy. I think it's a clear case of being deaf to what the people want. We generally have a history of boards that have not been engaged with the people and have not been listening. I've knocked on, frankly, and talked to thousands of voters and knocked on their doors, and I've given my full number to every one of them, and many of them have called me. And if I didn't answer, I return their call. But I think it goes back to servant leadership. And, you know, we shouldn't be here and get elected to have a long career in politics. It's not what our founding fathers wanted. The idea is to give back to our community, and it's about service above self.
Anybody else want it?
Yeah, let me go ahead and say real quick. Like I said, this is a journey I started in February 2019. My wife was, I think, shocked. She's an ESE teacher at East Milton Elementary. And I come home and I said, look, I've got to do something here. This is home. I've got to take it back and make it the way it used to be. And that's what I'm doing this for, the people. I've talked to so many that are not being heard. There are taxpayers, too. There's people that have been promised dirt roads that's going to get paved for decades. Hasn't happened. You know why? Because it's not a priority to certain people, and it should be. We've got to plan, budget, prioritize. Look at my skills. Look at what I've done. I'll be 52 this year. I paid off three homes by the time I was 50 years old, and I did that basically as an enlisted person raising poor kids. So I know how to manage money. I know how to live within my means, and I know how to help people, and I do care about people, or I wouldn't be doing this, trust me. Thank you.
Lane, did you want to comment? It's optional, of course. Do you want to?
Well, I'm here. And as Jerry said, it was a dream of his to be a county commissioner. It has been an honor to serve as your county commissioner for the past 12 years. It really sincerely has. It has given me an insight into our county that I never would have had otherwise, and I appreciate the opportunity that you have all given me.
Anybody else have a question for any of the candidates tonight over here?
My name is Carmen Reynolds, and I live in Navarre, and I prepared a couple of questions at the last minute here. In light of the rapid development, which involves clearcutting and destruction of wetlands, the true impact of that has been quoted by Purdue University, just so that you understand. One acre of wetland, one foot deep, absorbs 330,000 gallons of water. That's the absorptive capacity. So when we see all the trees cut, clear cut for development, we see wetlands, whether it's mitigated or filled in, that is what's happening down here in the peninsula and all over the county, frankly, up in Pace. Have you gentlemen given any thought to the efficient and timely hurricane evacuation in light of this rapid development?
Figure one, everybody.
Everyone, please.
All right, we'll start with Lane.
Again, it's, the end part of your question there is moving traffic efficiently, and those typically are our major state facilities, Highway 87, Highway 98, Highway 90. Highway 98, I mentioned, that's being six-laned in my district. That construction project will start within this fiscal year. Highway 87, we pushed, got it placed on the Strategic Intermodal System a few years ago so that hopefully we can make it available, or make additional state funding available for Highway 87 to get it four-lane. With regard to Highway 98 through Navarre, that's in the design phase, that will come next. Highway 90, that's a long-range plan. Servant on the TPO.
Servant on the TPO, someone earlier mentioned have a five, 10, 15-year plan. We have a 50-year plan on the TPO. The problem is, we have a cost feasible plan and then a long-range transportation plan. And nary the two shall meet, because the cost feasible plan has billions of dollars, I'm sorry, the long-range transportation plan has billions of dollars on it, and the cost feasible plan has hundreds of millions of dollars on it. So we're pushing to get 87 improved. It was four-laned from Navarre to Milton. We have to work on the rest of it now.
Thank you. Colton Wright, candidate for District Five. Carmen, I think I've made it pretty clear on where I stand on old growth trees and clearcutting, and that we need to be very good stewards of our environment. When it comes to evacuation, I think there's two things to remember here. One, what the infrastructure will handle, how do we react to that? And then two, personal responsibility. So number one, we have the ability, our roadways, if need be, can be adapted, and we can have local law enforcement along with Highway Patrol help assist with directing traffic out of the roadways. But personal responsibility is a big issue for me as well. And if a person chooses to wait until the last moment where the Cat Five hurricane is on their doorstep, I can't have a lot of sympathy for them. Now, if they, two days out, chose to leave, pack up their things and their family, and really look at the safety of their family and move out and evacuate, I think if we do that in a reasonable way, I don't think our traffic issue from an evacuation standpoint is so bad. I've lived here a long time, Santa Rosa County since 1990, and the greater Musquegon County, Santa Rosa County area since 1977. Been through a lot of hurricanes. Watched Aaron, watched Opel, survived Ivan. Most of the traffic issues with evacuation happened when people chose to wait until the last minute, and that's why they rode out Hurricane Ivan on I-10 or I-65. But I think we do need to make sure we have some personal responsibility there.
Ryan Atkins. Carmen, you know my stance on trees and clearcutting. I mean, I know one tree soaks up a bunch of water, and I'm all about keeping that. I'm not for this fill-in build that's been going on around here. Since I started this a year and a half ago, I've learned so much. I didn't even know we had pumps over here running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that are owned by the county. And that was all shared with me by county employees. And that's kind of stuff that's just, a lot of things people don't know about. It goes back to transparency again. It's not put out there. So, you know, there's so much going on. But safety, like I said, is number one with me, and the state has to get that 87 four-laned sooner than later, because from Widing Field all the way to the Alabama line and all the way up through Birmingham, you're going to be deadlocked if it doesn't get widened. That's it.
Jerry Coe, County Commission Candidate, District Three. Carmen, thank you for the answer. It's vitally important that we protect our wetland areas. They were there, they're there for a reason. And every time we start shoving water uphill, we start having problems with that. On that portion of your question, land development code reviewed with cameras and microphones on so the citizens of Santa Rosa County can watch the discussion. A phrase that I heard one time, so the citizens can watch the sausage being made, I think it's very important. I think you get a lot of better, you get a lot better answers, and there's less pressure being laid when everything is out in the open. So I think we can get to the right place there. I think we're heading in the right direction on our transportation corridors. For Hurricane evac, absolutely the last leg, Highway 90 up to Widing Field, and then the four-lane is already set, starting at Widing Field to the Alabama line. And we do, I worked many years in an industry that when a hurricane was coming, you paid attention. We had a 48-hour and a 36-hour, you know. So I think we do need to, you know, all the people that have become our new neighbors, they've never lived in hurricane land. And maybe we need to take the time to educate, educate, educate. Although weather predicting has greatly improved over the last few years, and our new people, we need to tell them to look out for Jim Cantore, because that's a clear sign you're in trouble. But we do need to educate them the importance of that, because the timed event, at 24 hours out, it's too late. You're way better off hunkering down where you are. And so, you know, I would agree that there's some personal responsibility there. But we do have a lot of people that were used to different things. They were used to fires in California, or earthquakes in one part. They need to learn how we operate here. We don't get nervous and we don't worry too much, but we pay attention to what the weatherman says, and when it's time to go, we need to get them out. Thank you.
Stacy Bryant, District One. Carmen, I do have to say I respect your group, Save Our Soundside, and the work that they have done. I know that you, as well as them, has supported and given a lot of information to people regarding, you know, our natural resources. And I do appreciate that, and I hope that whenever the LDC is rewritten, that they take in consideration the research that has been done to show how much water a tree soaks in, and how much wetlands that we've been covering up. I know even in my own district, there was an area that we used to go trail riding in, and there was a big wetland area, and that was filled in recently. Slowly, over time, they filled it in, so it wasn't noticeable to a lot of people, except for those who take that track back there. So I think that when we start looking at writing the LDC, that we get people involved, nonprofit groups, people that, who have already done the research and are willing to spend their time and their effort, putting an opinion out there and looking at what are we doing in the long term? Because I've seen neighborhoods where they go in and clearcut everything, and then wonder why there's flooding and drainage problems. And it's, to me, it's common sense. You just ruined a lot of trees. You ruined an area that had a natural drainage area, and you filled it all in. So I would look at involving people in the community like yourself, like the group that's already done research, and get their input to make sure that we use, we're using the best minds available when we're writing this LDC and when we're approving land to be developed. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to ask a question before we wrap up? Well, Romy, we really don't have time for repeat, right? Or do we? You tell me. Oh, till nine? I was told till eight. Oh, we got all kinds of questions. All right, well, you get a twofer.
Thank you, Mike. Carmen Reynolds from Navarre. First of all, I wanted to clarify, I am not with Save Our Soundside. I do work with them, and they are having a meeting on the LDC tonight, but I'm not with them, so just to clarify. Animal Services, one of my near and dear pet peeves. We, Animal Services is fully occupied right now with animals. And because of our geographical separation with such a large county, we have a lot of stray, lost animals down in the south. What are some of your ideas to prevent these animals from staying down here? Because when the people find out, they have to drive an hour up there, spend an hour signing them in and explaining where they found them, blah, 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 another hour coming back down here, and then they say, forget it, it's too much trouble. What are your ideas to save the animals?
Who'd like to go first on that one?
I'll start. Well, I think first, it's going to be education. You know, people have to get their animals spayed and neutered. It is a personal responsibility, just like it is with a parent. You take care of your children, you have to take care of your animals. Now, with these animals that are left down there, we should look at, what can we do to offer free, reduced price for spayed and neutered animals? I know that there is a lot of people who believe in adopting animals as well. Make sure that the adoption service that we have down in the south end of the county is available for people. You know, we need to push that out there a little bit more. There's a lot of animals, even in the north end of the county, that get left out. We grew up in Jay Schmuckler area, and it wasn't uncommon for people to leave animals right at our little intersection that we lived in, because it was near the woods. And we would always wind up with extra animals that we'd have to adopt, and then we'd eventually wind up having to drive them into Milton to make sure that they were fixed. And then usually we'd put them up for adoption. You know, I like the no-kill shelters that we have in Pensacola. We need more of those in this area. We need to make sure that we're teaching people the responsibility of owning animals as well. It's not just a pet, but it's part of your family. I think that's a good start.
Jerry Coe, County Commission Candidate, District Three. You know, personal responsibility goes a long way. We have made some improvements in Santa Rosa County. We absolutely used to be, you know, it was, it was a kill shelter. It truly was. And there's been some improvements in that. A new organization that I'm happy to see in our county will be opening, well, they'll hopefully get started here pretty soon for a low-cost spay and neuter that will be on Pine Blossom Road. They're currently carrying a lot of animals to Okaloosa County to help that population. Another thing that I'm really excited about, and the feral cat population, kind of the process now is, our animal control folks will come pick up the feral cat, get them fixed, give them a rabies shot, and put them back to where they are. That is, that will absolutely have a huge impact on the amount of stray cats specifically. But I'll take it a step farther. You have a very large population down here, and if we don't have the truck, and we, and from our facility in the north end of the county, if we can't get down here to take care of this, I think some consideration may need to be made for at least a temporary holding facility to make it a little bit easier. I, look, my parents had two different pet shops. I grew up in a pet shop. I love all the animals. And we just have to make sure, A, that folks will be responsible, and sometimes that may take a little more education. But we very well may need to consider to either station, just like we do with ambulances, we station them all over the place. Maybe we need to station an animal control person down here, or make it a regular visit down here to pick up the strays and get the population caught up with. Thank you.
Ryan Atkins. My brother, Reno, he worked for Animal Control there in Milton. He just retired a couple of years ago, so I've heard a lot of stories. And, I mean, some good, some not so good. I'm all about protecting animals, taking care of them if you got them. I've seen some places before where they've been, you know, mistreated. There's a whole bunch of things that went on, especially out in the country with fight dog fightings and other things throughout the years, and, you know, it appalls me. You know, you need to love your animal and take care of your animals. So I would definitely be, you know, working with neighboring counties to make sure what we need to do to make sure they're protected. And like Jerry said, they're just now taking them, taking them in off the streets, fixing them and turning them back out, so that they're not killing them like they used to. But still, it's not the answer. We've just got to dig deeper to see what we can do, because they're still going to cause wrecks, they're still going to, you know, get rabies and other things out there. So we've got to keep going with that, but we're on the right track.
Colton Wright, candidate for District Five. So my dad told me a long time ago, you can tell a lot about a person by two things. One, how they behaved when no one was looking, and two, how they treated an animal. So I think it's very important that we take care of our animals. I think there's a lot of personal responsibility involved. There are a lot of irresponsible pet owners out there. A lot of animals get abandoned. And the feral cat problem is, we all know how quickly they can proliferate. So I think what we're doing currently is a good start. I think our shelter has done a good job, and had improvements by leaps and bounds compared to what they used to be, you know, years ago. I think there's two things we can do. I think we possibly dedicate a truck and an officer to the south end of the county to help shorten that response time. And I think the other thing we can look at doing is working with our PIO and the shelter to try to maybe encourage some south end adoption days, you know, some type of events, and get the word out to the community that, hey, you know, we have animals in the shelter and figure out a way to bring them down and have a one or two-day event on the south end to help promote adoption. I think that'd be a good start.
Lane Lynchard, County Commissioner for District Five. First off, I would applaud everyone who works at the animal shelter. We have very dedicated employees who way too often have to make very difficult decisions. Our animal control department has come leaps and bounds in the last couple of years. We were contacted by concerned citizens. A Hope for Santa Rosa County came up, made some presentations, actually one when we were holding a meeting at Tiger Point Community Center. We engaged a consultant to come review our animal services department. Our euthanasia rate plummeted after we incorporated new adoption procedures and intake procedures. And for the first time earlier this year, our animal services department was empty. Everything had been adopted out. This is the first time that's ever happened. Now, we are dealing with some struggles. One big problem is, because of COVID-19, volunteerism is down. More people are not going and volunteering their time. But we have, that operation couldn't succeed without volunteers. So they're a necessary element to our animal control department. But we are, again, we've done, we've come a long way in the last few years in animal control.
Did you have another question? You want to ask? You'll pass? Okay. All right, Romy's got one.
And you can summarize this if you want to, but do you support the incorporation of Navarre?
Since everybody's looking down here at me. Well, I think that's strictly left up to the voters in Navarre. There's, you know, we can make all these assumptions based on it, but the people that it's going to affect the most should be the people who are voting on it and decide their own future.
I believe that every community in our county should decide what their community looks like. Here's what I'll do for you as a county commissioner. What are we at? Twice that we've gone through incorporation? As your county commissioner, I'm going to make sure that all the facts are on the table, and that the facts have been vetted. I think it's very important that you know exactly what you're getting yourself into, and that there's not any false information put out there. Or even shading of the truth. What Navarre wants to do, I feel the same way about where I live, or Pace, what they want to do, what Jay wants to do, you know, and that's not a cop-out of an answer. I think every community needs to decide what they want to do. Every time I have watched this, I have seen problems in things that are said and done. So as county commissioner, I'm going to make sure that you get the facts. I don't want to referee the election. I just want to make sure that everyone is getting the same set of facts.
Ryan Atkins. That would be up to the people that live here in the city, Romy. That's why I live in the country. I don't like, I'm not for taxes and more government, so, no.
I don't live in Navarre, so it's not up to me. It's up to the people that live in Navarre, and if they choose to incorporate and they vote to do it, that's fine. If they choose not to, that's okay too.
I don't live in Navarre, but I opened my first business, my law firm in Navarre in 2000, so 20 years ago. I'm not sure if it was July or August. I need to look back and see. But I've been here in Navarre for 20 years. I think it's up to the people who live here. I think the, before you make that decision, you need to be fully apprised of the facts.
I once met with someone who was heavily involved in the effort to incorporate Navarre. And one of my first questions was, how are you going to fund it? And they said, well, it's easy. We take the money that we send to the county and we just keep it here. That's not how it works. You have your county millage rate, you pay that, just like the city of Gulf Breeze. They pay their full county millage rate and then they have a city millage rate over and above that. You don't, you don't get to keep what you send to the county. It's an additional millage rate and people need to be fully aware of that. And then what type of services do you want? What is your goal within corporation? Gulf Breeze has wonderful city services. They have multiple revenue streams. So it's a difficult decision. It sounds great. Hey, let's incorporate and get sidewalks and parks. It's not that easy.
Any other questions? One in the back there, all right?
Good evening and thank all y'all for coming. It really does make a difference to us as voters. I'm Paul Gault from Navarre. I brought a host stack of questions for some people who aren't here. So I'll just ask you guys a question. We've talked and all of you have talked about what needs to be better, what needs to be done. Give me something from each of your perspectives in the last six months to a year, something that the board or the county has done that's good. Let's talk about something positive. Is there anything that you can reflect back on and say, that was good?
All right, I'll start this one. I was wondering how long it's going to take Paul to come up with a question. So I didn't know he was going to wait to the very end. But, you know, I have seen over the last three to four months that there's probably more infrastructure going on in District One than I've ever seen before. I don't know why it took three and a half years to finally start, but it has. Could be because of selection time. So I think that's a little back end compliment, but that's the one thing I have seen.
Well, and understand, you know, sometimes I get, I will be referred to as the critic, but I also give praise where praise is due. Yes, we have seen some improvements. I think one of the things that, and I want to, I want to tell you, if you elect me, you're going to be telling me, please quit giving us information. You're giving us too much. I think that's one of the issues now is of not sharing the story as well. If you don't fill in the blanks, perception always beats out reality. Certainly, we have seen some drainage improvements. We have seen some road improvements. And, you know, I get a good sense. Just we've got to stick a little more money in infrastructure. But yeah, there's plenty that we, I wouldn't live here if I didn't like the county, you know. I just, we are seeing a lot of good things that are starting to move now. So, thank you.
Yeah, like, it's Ryan Atkins. Like they've said, I've seen it too, out and about on all these roads. And I've learned a lot of new roads since I started this. Like I said, I'm used to, when I left here in 86, it was mostly dirt roads and there wasn't a lot between Milton and Navarre and all the way through Pace, there was nothing. So, yeah, it's grown up and it's changed a lot and we definitely have to fix things, infrastructure. If we don't, like I said, it's just, it's going to get worse. But we've got a lot of different things going on. I've seen a lot of parks. I just took my grandkids to Fidelis. They opened it up, got it. And, you know, it brought back memories sitting there seeing that because I grew up going to that school. And it was just like, I can remember me and my classmates playing on them little monkey bars and it does, you know, that's 50 years ago almost. So Jay's got a nice park now and there's a lot of things, but I think we're going to have to direct the money toward the infrastructure and not have so many projects going on at one time, you know, kind of, kind of keep it trimmed down to what is a priority and then we can move on from there.
Colton Wright, candidate for District Five. So much like Jerry, I do tend to be an eternal optimist and I do try to always find the positives in things. I love this county and that's why I'm even engaging in this process. One of the things I've seen the board do is I've seen the board force people to become more engaged. And I've seen a lot of citizens get out and start making their voices heard and force them to listen more. To me, that's a very positive thing because I think it's important that as citizens, we're engaged in the process and not just sitting back and being quiet. Secondly, I believe the low-cost option sales tax, the half cent that we currently have, I sat there. I looked at those projects as a board, you know, we vetted them. We gave priority to certain projects and passed that along to the commissioners and there are some great things that have been done. We have some parks now that have 88 accessible playgrounds. So a kid confined to a wheelchair or with some disability now has the ability to play on the playground with the rest of the kids. You know, we have some drainage infrastructure projects that have been started. We have some that have been completed. But there's been good work done in this county, but there's a long way to go and there are brighter days ahead.
Last six months, I'm going to try to keep it to that. There's a new traffic light going in at Soundside Drive and Highway 98. That's in the approved work plan for FDOT. We have announced three new economic development projects in Santa Rosa Industrial Park East. We landed Leonardo, which is a $35 million investment at Whiting. We signed a lease for new soccer fields at Pensacola State College. At our last meeting, we awarded the engineering contract for the new soccer fields at Pensacola State College. We approved our multi-year implementation plan for our local component of Restore, which will eliminate effluent discharge into Santa Rosa Sound, eliminate septic tanks in the city of Gulf Breeze and eliminate the discharge of effluent in the Blackwater River. We completed the Godwin Connector, which is a 10-foot wooden raised boardwalk that connects Soundside Drive to Tiger Point. That project has been in the works for years, but it is now complete. And next week, you'll get to hear about Project Yummy, which is coming soon.
Okay, so we've had very good questions tonight, certainly from the public, maybe from me, I don't know. But now we're going to get to what I find is usually the most interesting part of the debate. And that is when it's actually a debate. So what I'd like to do is have each of you ask your opponent a question. So Jerry, you're going to get to ask a question to Ryan. Ryan, of Jerry. Colton and Lane can each ask a question. Stacy, unfortunately, your opponents aren't here, so, you know, I guess you're going to be left out of this one. But we'll start with Jerry. Jerry, do you have a question for Ryan?
Sure. Ryan, what was your motivating factor in deciding to run for county commissioner?
I looked out my window, Jerry, and I didn't like what I saw. I got a question for you. What made you wait nine months, decide to run after I put my name in the hat?
Well, a lot of things came in. I will tell you, my truck with the no new tax sign in the back of it got a lot of attention. And I just felt the level of support. A lot of people contacted me, a lot of people called me, a lot of people encouraged me to run, so I decided to do that. So, you know, in America, we all get to run, so you're in there and so am I. Of course, we're the only two here tonight, but that's okay.
We're the oldest two, except for Salter.
Colton, what question do you have for Lane?
Lane, I will thank you for your service for the 12 years you have given the county. And I think you're, I know you're a good man and I supported you once before and respect you immensely. But one thing that I continuously heard from people over the last several years and one thing that's bothered me. Why have you been distant and not responded to people when they've reached out to you? When they've called, asked you to attend an event, show up, be involved in the community, or when they've called you or sent you an email with a question? I know there's times you have responded, but the consensus from a lot of voters has been you haven't responded to them and I just want to know why.
I think if you check around, you'll find out the consensus from a lot of developers is that I don't return calls. I adopted a policy 11 years ago, my second year on the board, that I would not talk with anyone before rezoning hearing. And I still don't. If you're a developer or if you're your average Joe who has a rezoning that's coming in front of my board, I will not return your call. The administrative assistants at the office know that. I will tell them or tell someone if they do reach me or if they send me an email, send me whatever you want me to know. Send me an email. I will be glad to review it. But I choose not to engage with people who have issues, rezoning issues or conditional uses coming in front of the board. I can, I'm an attorney. I view those as quasi judicial. I think everything that transpires needs to be in the open, needs to be on the record. In terms of community events, I do speak to homeowners associations. I am not a social butterfly. I'm a bit of an introvert. I don't schmooze. I don't go to business after hours. My son and I go to the gym three nights a week and I spend the other nights at home typically. So, you know, there are those who disagree with the fact that I don't speak with people who have rezoning issues in front of the board.
And did you want to follow up on that? I mean, it really is only one question, so only if it's related.
Thank you, Lane, and I agree with you. And for the record, the four years I served on the zoning board, I only had two instances where people ever reached out to me to talk about an upcoming case or both homeowners. And I told them the same thing. I refuse to speak to them about that. And I think that is important that those types of things get handled in the boardroom where it is out in the public view.
So Lane, what question do you have for Colton?
Would you say now that you're opposed to any increase in the millage rate in the coming four years?
Absolutely. I've heard a rumor that somewhere along the way, people thought I was for raising property taxes in the millage rate. I don't know where that came from. I have no intention of raising property taxes. I think that the fact that our property taxes are low is a good thing. I think you'll see revenue to the county continues to increase with the low property tax, simply based on home values increasing. So the answer is absolutely a firm no.
Stacy, you indicated you wanted to ask a question, but Jeff and Sam aren't here, so.
Well, actually, I'd like to ask a question to everybody up here. So you guys heard me talk about volunteer work. My wife and I do a lot on the side, outside of regular jobs and spend time with the family. And I know Jerry and I have spoken about this before, but I'd like to ask every commissioner, commissioner candidate, if they'd be willing to take and volunteer at least 20 hours a year in nonprofit groups. Or at least, you can always do more. And I'd like to put that forward that, you know, if you would give me a firm commitment that you would spend that time out there in the community, working with nonprofits.
I can tell you now that I shoot way past that mark. My passion is band programs. My daughter is the Holland Navarre Band Director. Both my kids went to Milton High School. Rough numbers, you know, our big thing from Milton High School is selling shish kebabs. Through the last 16 years, rough numbers, give or take a few, I've in some way, shape or form touched about 500,000 of them. I believe in volunteer work. I'm not one to normally tell a lot of people about that because my satisfaction is being able to see a bunch of kids that we defer $350 of the cost of being in a marching band. That allows them to be in the program. It's a very personal thing with me. And with my daughter's program down here, you know, dad gets to pull the trailer and make sure they get to the high school games and all of that. And there's a number of other things that I've participated in. Just recently, I was sent word that Jay Florida, they were going to build a new playground. So I showed up ready to work. Wasn't about politics. It was about building a new playground. The 20 volunteers that showed up for that event saved the city of Jay $20,000 in what the fee would have been. And anytime there's a project like that, you know, you can count on me being there. I think it's a very fabric of our society, so absolutely. Thank you.
Ryan Atkins. I'm busier now, I think, since I retired than I ever was. I don't know, maybe I'm getting older slower, but I'm a member of the American Legion in Jay. I'm a member of the Fleet Reserve in Milton. I'm a member of the Jay Historical Society. I am signed up now to be a mentor for the Take Stock in Children. You know, I'm all about mentoring and doing things for the kids and making sure they get on, you know, get a jump on life. Because I tell you what, I've seen a lot of kids that, since I've come back, that are on the wrong path and they got messed up with drugs and other things. And it kills me and I don't know how to help these kids and I pray every night that something will come to me to help them. But, you know, hopefully somebody, somebody can be that person to make that difference in somebody's life. And I applaud anybody that's volunteering.
Yeah, so Stacy, 20 hours would be a huge reduction. I don't, I don't, that's not a net gain for the county and the community. No, I don't like to toot my own horn, but, you know, I've spent years helping where I could, you know, and it's just, it's about community, right? I mean, this community has afforded me a ton of opportunities. I have a successful business. It's my duty and my obligation to give back and help any way I can. Worked side by side with Jerry on that playground, spent an entire day on a Friday, an entire day on a Saturday, and it was really hot out there. But, you know, saved the community of Jay a ton of money and it's going to be great to see some smiles on those kids' faces for sure. Through my business, we sponsored a Miracle League team and I volunteered on numerous occasions to actually come out and help and be a buddy. And that too, much like Lane said, go out and watch a game. If you have a chance to be a buddy and actually help one of those kids and be with them during a game, it will change your life and your perspective on how fortunate you are, but frankly, how gifted those kids are too. But I think it's important that everybody give back and I think it would be important that all the commissioners take some time to do so. And in some ways, maybe even do it as a joint, you know, board event. Sometimes I think the optics of that though, oftentimes people look at that and say, oh, they're just doing it to get, you know, to get elected or for politics. And I think people need to get past that as well, though. You know, anytime someone's out there volunteering their time, just accept it for what it's worth. And don't judge why they're doing it or what they're doing. Just accept the fact they're out there helping.
I agree. In some of the most rewarding hours I have ever spent were coaching basketball at the church that we go to. So absolutely, I volunteer time. I donate resources to various organizations and will continue to do so.
Okay, so let's just take a minute or two, each candidate, starting with Lane, because we started with Stacy to begin with a closing statement, minute or two, and then we will say goodnight. Lane, we'll start with you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and thank you for everyone who took the time to watch this discussion tonight. I hope what you take away from this discussion is that Santa Rosa County has a lot going for it. We are a unique county, again, diverse population from the farmlands up north to the beaches in the south. We have worked together as a team through the years in Santa Rosa County to overcome obstacles from Hurricane Ivan to the BP oil spill, and now we're facing another challenge with COVID-19. It's nothing that we can't beat, though. Our economy is more diverse now than it's ever been before. We are more resilient as a county there now than we've ever been before. I grew up here in Santa Rosa County, moved away. I have a bachelor's in finance, have a law degree and a master's in tax law. I chose to come back to Santa Rosa County to raise my family because this is the place I wanted to be. to raise my family, because this is the place I wanted to be. I've told people before, I ran for office for selfish reasons. I want my son to look at Santa Rosa County as a place that he wants to come back home to after he goes to college. And I want Santa Rosa County to be a place that he will be able to come back to after he goes to college and have a good career and make a good life. That's still my goal for Santa Rosa County. I think we're getting closer all the time. I appreciate the support through the years. It's been an honor to serve on the Board of County Commissioners. And I ask for your vote on August 18th for Lane Lynch, District Five. Thank you.
So thank you to the chamber, Navarre Newspaper and South Santa Rosa News for hosting this event. I really appreciate the opportunity to get to speak to the people of Santa Rosa County and hear from other people running for office. Folks, I'm not a wealthy man, I'm not a career politician, I don't have a desire to be in politics. I'm just a regular guy who owns a business, has a family, and wants to help make things better. Lived in Santa Rosa County for 30 years, and I've told you about my wife and my two young daughters. But my time operating a small business in the community of Gulf Breeze has mirrored the same challenges that our county has faced. For 16 years, my business has grown year over year, much like Santa Rosa County's population. And I know what it's like to struggle to make that payroll and have those families depend on me. I know it's like, I know it is, hello? Okay. Microphone keeps cutting out. I know what it's like to make an annual budget and have to stick to it. And how to react and manage in a time of crisis. And most of all, I know how to plan for the future. I know the citizens are tired of flooding, tired of crowded roads, tired of trash issues. But the big thing is, I think the citizens feel a lot of times like no one's listening to them. That's why I've given my phone number out to people. I've asked people to call me if they have a concern. And I've told them, I will call you back. You have a clear choice. It's either do the same things we've always done, or make some bold moves for some change for the future. And I'm working to improve Santa Rosa County for my children, but also for yours. And I'm humbly asking for your vote on August 18th for Colton Wright, for County Commissioner, District Five.
Ryan Adkins, I agree with Colton here, I say ditto to all that. Everybody knows, like I said, I'm running for the people. That's the only reason I'm in this race. I don't even know builders and developers and all that. My brother's turning 65, he just retired. My sister's a schoolteacher. And my wife, that's about it. That's the extent of what I got left here in this county. And I got a sister that actually has moved out that lived in Pace. And, but I've got a lot of friends and I've got a lot of memories. And I've got a lot of things that I don't wanna see disappear. I don't want to turn into places I've lived in Virginia and California, where it'd take me two hours to get home or go to work. You know, I've seen all that. And like I said, I went to school to get my degree. And I wanna use it to make things better here. I mean, I know the Lord's got a purpose for everybody and I believe this is what I'm supposed to be doing. And if not, I'll find something else or wherever He wants me to go. But I believe that we can make this better, but everybody has to want to and wanna work together. And like I said, that's the only reason I'm running for, the love of it. And gonna use everything that I've got to pinch the pennies and do all the things that I know how to do. I was an analyst, I was a lean Six Sigma supervisor, I was a safety supervisor, I was a logistics analyst, database analyst. I mean, I was the fix-it guy in the Navy. If something was broke, they'd say, get Adkins. And I'm like, oh, gosh. And my wife didn't see a lot of me. You know, even on short day, I'd work 10, 12-hour days. So I know what it's like to work. And I think this position should be a full-time position, not a part-time position. And, you know, the money, I'm not in it for the money. I own everything, I'm not rich, but everything's paid for. And I'm just trying to give back and make it better. And if that's what y'all want, I'm offering my services. So, you know, if not, and I can't get anything done, I do get in there, I'll go back to the house and go hunting and fishing. I mean, that's, that's just, that's me. You know, I'm not gonna waste your time and you don't waste mine. But I definitely will give you everything I've got in my heart and soul to make this county better. And I promise you that, if you vote for me, that's what will happen.
Well, how you doing, ladies and gentlemen? And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the audience here and those that are watching this. My name is Jerry Cooe and I'm a candidate for County Commissioner, District Three. Folks, I'll tell you that I believe that actions speak louder than words. For 20 years, I've been your county watchdog, taking up issues on behalf of you. Very few of those issues had anything to do with me, but I saw needs that I felt like needed to be addressed. For 20 years, I fought against higher taxes. You see, in 2005, a sales tax was tried. I fought that one and won. A millage rate attempt was made along those times. And I fought against that. And we, the citizens, won. And I'll tell you, for the last 20 years, I've made sure your government is open and accessible to you. I want you to understand how important that is. You don't normally see what I do behind the scenes to make sure that happens. There are challenges constantly. Public records requests and things of that nature to make sure that your government is open and accessible to you. I want you to know about me personally in that I don't, I'm retired. This will be a full-time job for me. I want you to know, I don't owe anybody anything. And there's only one special interest group that I'm gonna pay attention to. And that's the silent majority, you, the citizens. I too, the reason a lot of you are jaded about government today is exactly the reason I'm running for office. I have no desire to be a politician. The day that I become a politician is the day that I walk away from it. I choose to be a public servant. I hope that you have looked, I want you to do your research. I want you to go to C O U E Y 2020.com. Look at what I've done. The mail-out that you got from me was not about future stuff, it's stuff that I've already done for you. I want you to think about that when you make your decision. And I want you to look far and wide and do your research on where campaign dollars come from. I think it's important. I'm independent. I'm gonna make a decision based on what is best for the citizens of Santa Rosa County. Because I want you to know, and I mean this, and it's on my webpage, but I wanna repeat it again. I clearly understand that the citizens of Santa Rosa County will be my boss. And you can hold me accountable for that. Thank you.
I'm Stacy Bryan. I am your District One candidate for County Commissioner. And what I'm offering to you is honesty, integrity, and transparency in government. I'm not tied to special interests. I like to think that I have the demeanor to work with other people that you see sitting up here and other commissioners. Because that's what you need, someone who's gonna work together. Now, we also need someone that's gonna listen to you. So everybody in this room and those watching, you have a seat at the table. Your county commissioner's gonna hear you and take into consideration your thoughts and your ideas as we move forward. This isn't done together. This is done together, it's not done individually. So together, we can take and make this county a county that we're proud to say is our county and we like the way that it's headed. Thank you.
Alright, well, I would like to thank each of you for coming out this evening. And I'd also like to thank each of you for caring enough about our county to run for office. And for those that are in the room and also watching online, thank you as well. People like to talk about how voting is a right. I prefer a different R-word. I think voting's a responsibility. But it's important that we be informed when we vote. So thank you in attendance and watching online. Thank you for caring enough to be informed.